Okay, calling the meeting to order. Welcome to the regular town council meeting for the town of Cave Creek, Monday, November 18th, 2024. If you'll stand, we'll have the pledge. Under the announcement session, I just wanted to, uh, to say this. Uh, I'm saddened to announce that our town manager, Grady Miller, had a tragic death in his family. So he's taken some time off to be with his loved ones and we're being well-served with the deputy town manager. We are a small-town organization and we support one another. We're all deeply sorry for Grady's loss and our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family through this time of grieving. I spoke to Grady, uh, last night and he's very grateful all for all the expressions of sympathy and condolences that have come in. And, uh, knowing his work ethic, I'll, we'll probably see him sooner rather than later. But for now, will you please join me and stand for a moment of silence in memory of Grady's family? Thank you. Any other public announcements from council?
For those of you who attended the dark sky event, uh, recently, it was a smashing success. Um, if you haven't attended a dark sky event, you need to show up next time. It was well worth the effort. Uh, the, the crew is phenomenal and, uh, the parking lot was absolutely full.
That's good news. Thank you. Others? Okay, call to the public.
First up, Thomas McGuire.
Some of you may know that this is a swan song for one of our greatest members of the town council we've ever had. Unfortunately, Ernie, anybody who's been here as long as you have is clearly over the hill.
I've been here 20 years.
You've been a, a ceaseless defender of this town. Uh, I've seen tough times. We've seen tough times in your... Is it on? Do I need to go closer? I think it's on. Do I need to go closer?
Maybe so, or talk a little louder.
I talk a little louder. Okay, my teacher voice. Yeah, okay, you, you, you know, you've, you've really taken very personally the benefit of the town, the benefit of the staff. And, uh, you've also been very specific in supporting the second amendment. And, uh, I just want you to know that I forgive you for all of the times that you voted differently than I did. In spite of that, Ernie, you win a Bitcoin.
For, for those of us who know, this is my last official meeting sitting up here as I chose not to run again after 19 and a half years of service to this community. And wow, Bitcoin, they were like 93,000 bucks today. Thanks, Tom.
That's a real Bitcoin. That's a real Bitcoin and a real Bitcoin ain't worth more than a couple of dollars. If it were a virtual Bitcoin, I wouldn't be giving it to you.
If I lose it, does it become virtual?
Get a lawyer. You're welcome.
Next in line, Abraham Abey.
Abraham Abey, 42620 North Cohava Ranch Road, Cave Creek. Mayor, council members, thank you. I just wanted to talk a minute about the same thing that Dusty Rhodes just spoke about. It was the Cave Creek, uh, dark skies event. It was really, really spectacular. And my hope is seeing that all these people that showed up. It wasn't just a few people from our own town. People came from so many places. So, uh, it seems to me that there is a hunger for people to see things, to, to be a part of something. And I want to thank Bruce Arlen for his vision of being able to see something and working so diligently at it to bring this thing together. I was just amazed to see how many people actually showed up. They lugged their chairs, they came and they all sat and, uh, the people that were there presenting. You know, they engaged the people so dramatically. But you know, the question always is, why do people do this stuff? There's something in them to want to see greater things than it's normally seen. So my encouragement to, to the town is if we could get behind this next year, can you imagine if this thing got bigger and bigger and bigger? That business owners here, restaurants and all these things would have all these people go and bring business to town because this event is bringing so many people. I don't know how many spaces are in the parking lot, but wow, that parking lot was completely, completely jammed. The area that we were sitting, there was really no space to walk around. It just shows that the desire, that the interest that is out there for something like this. So, you know, I've been searching and this is what I want to leave you guys with. These are the words of Psalm number 19. And it says, "The heavens declare the glory of God, and the sky above proclaims his handiwork. Day to day, they pour out speech, and night to night, they reveal knowledge. There is no speech, nor are there words, nor are there words whose voice is not heard. Their voices go out throughout all the earth." So when you think about that, the Lord is just revealing his glory. And I think us, the people, want to see the glory of these things. So my encouragement to the town is if you could get behind this thing, it would really be dynamic for the town, for all these people that come and does it. Thank you very kindly. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Bay.
Kathleen Abey.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, everybody. Seems I always follow him, but that's okay. It's a good place to be. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the task force committee. I'm speaking on Morningstar. Um, I thought it was amazing what they did. I was able to participate in a couple of meetings. They were cohesive. They took their mandate of looking for alternative trails. They found some awesome alternative trails that I'm strongly encouraging the town to please look into, um, that would serve safety. Um, the land that's already available, hooking you into the other trails of Maricopa County up to Spur Cross. Um, I'm, I understand that people get lost up there. I don't have experience behind me on that. But if people are getting lost and a need for water is up there and you're also looking for a waterway that goes up that way because you're dumping water on Spur Cross. The portal trail at the end of old stage, if that's an option, it sounds like a wonderful option. I live up on Cohava Ranch Road. You've heard him give the address. Um, the two parcels that staff gave the deed gift to. Um, I, the Luke's got a letter here. He's recommending that the town not build the trail. And if it should be built in the future, it should be built with the incorporation of direct citizen input. Because even though the committee might have said unanimous to accept the gift, it's not community-wide unanimous to accept the gift. I'm wholeheartedly against accepting the gift. And also the two staff properties at the top, that alignment, 48th Street alignment, there is no egress, legal access from staffs to properties to that alignment. So when I wrote in Snore News that it is a trail to nowhere, it truly would be a trail to nowhere. There are deed restrictions up there. He doesn't, you don't have access to hook up to that driveway up there. The access is to homes up that way. So I just wanted to make that known in case it hasn't come out or written somewhere. I didn't, I didn't, I don't get what you get, so excuse me. But thank you so much for your time and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bruce Harlan.
Uh, I just wanted to thank the town for, uh, issuing another permit by the fifth year. Thank you guys. And for providing the Porta-Johns and I do believe, uh, for the event, for the dark sky event and for, uh, doing the one day or one evening insurance rider, which is important. We're looking into doing our own insurance next time around. It's rather expensive and we're a small nonprofit. But anyway, thank you, Dusty Rhodes, for mentioning that. I didn't know that. And to Abraham Bye, thank you for, or Bay for saying that. Uh, we had, it was a grand success. The weather cooperated. The wind wa, did not kick up in the canyon, so just at the last, uh, maybe 15 minutes, there was a little bit more wind. And we did, we had people from all over the metropolitan, the whole valley, people come down, the very big radius of people who show up and, uh, spend money at our restaurants and other retail locations. So that's a, a big deal. It's been that way. It's growing and, and I just wanted you guys to know. Thank you.
Um, you did get a thousand dollar community grant from the town.
Yes, thank you.
Process is open again.
Yeah, I just found out about that and I'm going to reapply shortly. Thank you. Yeah, thanks a lot. Yeah, believe me, we use that money. We use the money.
Sure.
Yeah, for sure. Tom?
Bruce, how many people? You had a lot of volunteers.
We had about 630 people.
Volunteering.
Oh, volunteering. We had about 20 volunteers, many of which have voluntarily contacted me and said they want to do it again. So it's growing and growing and growing in that regard, too.
I hope the volunteers are better quality than the ones you're looking at up here.
You're welcome to do it anytime, Tom. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
So I have a question, Bruce.
You got another question?
There were two or three restaurants that had ran specials, correct?
Well, at Local Johnny's, I forgot to mention that. Local Johnny's did a dark sky meal deal. And so they had a lot of, uh, we, we worked it out where if you show the RSVP, you get, uh, you get the deal. And so a lot of people showed up and, uh, it was great. They're happy and we're gonna try to expand that to other locations, too, and see if we can do, uh, I don't know, emulate a very minor, different taste of Cave Creek. Not really, but you know, add some more. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. It's a great event.
Ms. Ellie.
Hi, I'm Miss Ellie, 5995 East CeeLo Run North. I haven't been here in a while. Good to see you all. Um, Ernie, I'm gonna miss you. Been a long road. I am here for an exciting thing. Um, I'm doing the Fiesta Bowl Parade again for the town of Cave Creek. Uh, you guys have wholeheartedly supported our entry since, I think, 2018, except for when we had COVID. So I'm here to invite you all to come be on a wagon. Um, Wheezy has said that she's going to participate with the rodeo. And I have a couple, um, riding groups, so we'll have lots of horses, which makes everybody happy. So I would love for you guys to come. I need to talk to Luke wherever he went. Um, because you guys have helped us out with the insurance for the groups. I do believe I also have a dance troupe and I'm working on a couple of other things, so we should, again, have a great, um, parade entry. One of the cowgirls that was in our group last year was used this year on the promotional material, so that made me really happy. But if you guys have any ideas or like you, what you'd like to see in the parade, um, just let me know.
Did you have a date on that?
That is December 28th. It starts at 10:00. They are sending me stuff three weeks, so I'll have more information, just organizational stuff, but it's always the same in about a couple of weeks. So, but I'd love to have you guys come. So I'm trying to get tractors. We'll see. They should be all decorated for Christmas, so it might be hard to get them down there. But anyways, call me if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellie.
Man, if you do go, make sure you dress warm. My coldest I've ever been was in the pre-stage for that one year. It was terrible.
Mayor, that completes the call to public.
Okay, uh, Town Manager reporting.
Just a reminder that the community grant applications are open, so take another opportunity and, uh, they will be due December 2nd.
Okay, um, just a tale on a little bit, we've got 11 items tonight, so we're really going to, uh, try to, uh, uh, roll right along. Otherwise, we'll be here till 1:00 in the morning. Next on the agenda is a Cave Creek rodeo check presentation. Are you, are you gonna describe it, Mike? Would you step up and describe what is going on and, yeah?
Mayor Morris, Vice Mayor Royer, Council, Staff. My name is Michael Fredrickson. I am with, uh, Cave Creek Rodeo, obviously, and I am Vice President. We are here tonight to celebrate, um, a project that has been forthcoming for a while. And, uh, with that, we'd like to, uh, present a, uh, check. But first of all, I would like to, uh, mention that, um, what we are building with the skybox. I have had people contacting me from livestock, uh, our, uh, speaker, uh, our announcer at our rodeo. And somehow PRCA has even found out about this. And what they are saying about Cave Creek and our skybox is we could become the number one mid-sized rodeo in the nation. So that is going to be our goal and we're gonna keep pounding it with this. With this, uh, check tonight, we're, uh, we're well on our way, so let's.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the fellow who was instrumental in saving the rodeo, Mr. Ernie Bunch, to join me over here.
Thank you, sir.
Now, for those that don't know, um, the rodeo is essentially buying the skybox. We're putting $80,000 that we got for insurance when the old one fell down. And, uh, that check tonight was the first installment. It's under construction already. And then the rodeo is going to, uh, or as, as they make money from it, they're going to pay off essentially a loan that, that we are making. But it really is a rodeo-funded improvement out there, which we will own. So I just have the highest regard for the rodeo and what they're doing for the town and the way they're keeping our heritage alive. I just want to say congratulations and thank you. You're all doing a fabulous job. Next, we have the consent agenda, the approval of the April 3rd, 2024 Town Council Work Session Minutes. Approval of the April 8th, 2024 Town Council Work Session Minutes. The approval of the May 20th, 2024 Regular Town Council Meeting Amendments Minutes. Approval of the June 13th, 2024 Special Council Meeting Minutes. Approval of the June 17th, 2024 Regular Council Meeting Minutes. Approval of the June 19th, 2024 Special Town Council Work Session Minutes. Approval of the July 15th, 2024 Regular Council Meeting Men, Minutes. Approval of the August 19th, 2024 Audit Committee Meeting Minutes. Approval of the August 19th, 2024 Regular Council Meeting Minutes. And approval of the August 20th, 2024 Special, uh, Council Meeting Minutes. I didn't realize we had that many meetings, but this is quite a, quite a list there. Um, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? The motion carries 6-0 and we are on to the general agenda items, the council discussion and acceptance of a motorized, uh, of an easement for a non-motorized trail. Let's start over. Council discussion and acceptance of a dedication of an easement for a non-motorized trail easement located at a property owned by Morningstar Road Properties Incorporated, presented by the Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. I'll keep this brief because this is, uh, of, uh, relative recent history. Uh, at the previous town council meeting, a report was presented by the Chair and Vice Chair of the Council Appointed Ad Hoc Task Force. This committee worked through the summer to examine the proposed trail easement and explore alternative trail routes. On October 21st, the committee presented its report and findings to the town council unanimously recommending that town council accept the trail easement. Town council approved and accepted the committee's report at that same meeting. And this evening, staff is here to present the town council and the committee's recommendation to council to consider approving the dedication of the trail easement as depicted in the exhibits before you. I'll answer any questions, Mayor.
Questions? Seeing them, we're ready for motion then?
I'll, I'll do it. This is a motion to accept a dedication of an easement for a non-motorized trail easement located at a property owned by Morningstar Road Properties.
Second. Discussion?
I think there was a lot of patience that went into then. We'll point out that, uh, Stacy and Bill both received your Bitcoins already. This, this was a miracle, the way you brought people together. I think the people on the committee, uh, made it very clear they really do support having trails. They have second thoughts about this, this, what could happen with this particular trail. So I, I think it required a lot of patience and to the whole committee and to the two of you in particular, uh, we are very grateful.
And for me, with some of the reports I was getting, going from consensus to unanimous was a major, uh, hurdle and I appreciate the efforts.
Other council members?
Mayor, prior to your vote, we do have some public input as well.
Okay, uh, yes, public comment, excuse me.
Stacy Daniel?
Thank you, Carla.
Stacy Daniel, um, resident Cave Creek, 41740 North Cohava Ranch Road, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you. Um, just have a short statement. My husband and I have been full-time residents in Cave Creek for 15 years. We, along with our neighbors, have always been very alert for any signs of potential road connecting Cohava Springs Development across the creek and to the center of town, either by way of the private Cohava Ranch Road or Morningstar's private easement. For several, several reasons, we were initially against the town accepting Mark Stapp's trail easement gift. However, after spending the summer, past summer, serving on the Morningstar Trail Ad Hoc Task Force Committee, several revelations made me understand a different point of view. I now see the trail easement as a benefit and not a detriment, and let me explain briefly. There's been a longstanding assumption that a public roadway could be developed along, under, near the utility line between Freeman South Property Boundary and Stapp's Northern Property Boundary. However, Utility Easement Document 312722 dated September 17th, 1981, basically states that Cecil V. and Betty Sue Ramsey granted a four-foot wide easement, two feet on Freeman's property and two feet on Stapp's property to construct, operate, and maintain electric lines upon, across, over, and under the surface of the premise. Mark Stapp's gift specifically states several times that his gift of a trail easement is solely for, um, dedicated for non-motorized trail users. This easement is a maximum of 10 feet that meanders along but not totally connected to the above-mentioned utility easement. Its location is within the 30-foot Northern Property Boundary Easement, which, as I understand it, is not necessarily a wildlife corridor and could become something else different in the future. If a public roadway were ever imagined, that would take up another 60 feet south of the proposed gift. And, uh, that would mean the property owner could conceivably lose up to 90 feet along their northern boundary. This argument is that technically sometime in the future, a road could be built. But given these facts as they are today, the possibility of a road located on this particular property and accomplishing only half the distance needed in an attempt to connect Cohava Springs Development to 52nd Old Stage, in my mind, is unjustifiable. A non-motorized trail easement and an actual non-motorized trail are two separate issues. Let me restate the committee's unanimous conclusion presented in October. Building a trail on Stapp's proposed easement gift would be a costly expense for an unfulfilled outcome because it's in the wrong location, terminating east of the private 48th Street alignment. It would cause undue hardships for the residents in the immediate vicinity because of trespassers. The proposed Northern Alternate Trail Number One is the key to connecting the towns' side, uh, east-side trail users to nearly 4,000 acres of open, open space. By accepting Stapp's proposed gift, this trail easement would solidify a second layer of protection for an east-west wildlife corridor and preserve open space in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your service.
Bill Bissour?
My name is Bill Bissour. I'm living in Cave Creek at 2415 East Rockaway Hills Road, which is actually in Cave Creek. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, thank you so much for your service. I really do appreciate what you do. I just want to add just a little bit that we gained through the experience and that is the importance of the trail. And I, I think actually an interesting thing was that if I were to pick two cultural things that make Cave Creek Cave Creek, it is our trail system and open space and the rodeo. This is our culture. This will be our legacy long after we're gone. If these trails and open space survive, well, they might think something nice of us. So every meeting that we had, no matter how contentious it was, we all agreed on one thing. We are not in opposition to trails. These trails are important. Realtors tell us that the magic words are ride right out your back gate onto the trail system. We have some real jewels here. We have the jewel of the creek, Spur Cross. We have 4,000 acres zone for open space over 30 miles of trails. We really have a wonderful asset there. Uh, I'd take that over a dog park any day, although some, I am a dog owner and my wife may, well, the dog would certainly disagree with me, but, uh, we have to continue to build on this and I just want to thank you for supporting what we did and the trail system in general. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Greenman?
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Lisa Greenman, 54, Morningstar Road, and I, um, was a member of the task force. And I want to share with you one thing is that we began every meeting by saying that there is nobody in this room that is against trails. So could we please put that to bed? There was never anybody that was against trails in Cave Creek on the task force. I just want to make that very, very clear. Second, I also want to make clear, one, that it was a privilege to serve on the task force and that we had very good leadership in our two heads. And, um, I want to also note that we did say that we want you to accept the gift and that was in a unanimous decision. But may I also say, it was a unanimous decision that no trail be built on that easement gift. That, too, was unanimous. And we provided amazing alternatives that solve so many other issues in the town. And I really, really urge you, um, to put aside the path of least resistance perhaps and look at what we gave you because I think they're just fantastic alternatives that open up that, all that land that we can't access. It's in that little corridor between Cohava Springs and what is up on the 48th Street alignment. So I just wanted to let you know, it was unanimous to accept the gift and it was unanimous to never build a trail on that gift. And let it be open space that will be a wonderful gift to the And let it be open space that will be a wonderful gift to this town. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes the public comment for this item.
Okay, any further discussion from council?
Uh, just a comment that, um, I appreciate the work of the task force and being very clear in the options recommended for the council to consider. Uh, I agree. I think it's a win-win to accept the gift of easement and keep that as open space. Never to be at risk for variance or other changes that could happen in the future. Thank you.
So what I'm struggling with is if we're going to recommend alternative one and alternative two, uh, and I think those are both viable alternatives. I don't see the need to do a trail or an easement or accepting the easement. It's superfluous to anything else that we've done. Now, it doesn't hurt anything, but what's the purpose? Most of the land that that trail or that easement is on is down on the wash and you can't build on it anyways. So it's going to be open space whether you want it or not. So from my perspective, got an easement that's not going anywhere. So, I mean, I guess we could do it, but it's just superfluous to, to what we're proposing with alternatives one and two. Just my thoughts.
Other comments? Um, I'd like to thank the committee and the committee chairs for doing an impossible job to seem like when, uh, when the committee was formed and that has come to a consensus, unanimous consensus. So I think it's a job well done and I think you've done a great service to the town. Uh, just the deliberations, no matter how the vote comes out, I think the deliberations in what you've done was, was fabulous. You've done a great job. Yep. So we'll have a roll call vote, please, Carla.
Councilmember Augerton, absent. Councilmember Bunch?
Yes, to the good course.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
I'm going to be the contrarian, no.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion passes five to one and we move on to our next, um, issue, which. Is, uh, council discussion approval of resolution number R twenty twenty-four dash fifteen to resolution of the mayor. And town council, town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting the twenty twenty-four town core plan update presented by the Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I will try to be brief. I just wanted to highlight, uh, the work that's gone in to get us to this point this evening. The twenty twenty-four town core plan before the council this evening is a culmination of many months of work by planning staff and stakeholders, including the general public. Business owners, nonprofit groups, town department staff, and the planning commission. Uh, work to update the town core plan began in the summer of twenty twenty-three with a planning commission workshop. Which proceeded through staff review where multiple departments were involved to create a comprehensive review and revision to the town's existing town core plan. A staff redline document was prepared, uh, as stated through various input from, uh, the staff members such as Jim Ford. Our utilities director, Sean Cruz Weisner, town engineer, Hal Marin, and, um, various building officials. So. Um, a staff redline document was prepared. A website link was created to solicit online feedback and public meetings were held to affirm current sections. And confirm the need for changes or updates in other sections. The planning commission met multiple times, uh, throughout this process of the, the public input, uh, to audit our work. Uh, after public input meetings. So I, I made a note here, this process followed very closely the procedure that staff learned and, and essentially stole from our general plan consultant. That, uh, went through this, uh, going through the general plan, uh, update in twenty twenty and getting it updated and ratified by the voters in twenty twenty-one. Um, this is a specific area plan, so this does not require the same level of, of scrutiny and ultimately voter ratification. Uh, that the town, that the general plan does, but nevertheless, it's an important plan. The planning commission recommended approval of the twenty twenty-four town core plan update in December of twenty twenty-three. Upon their recommendation, staff then circulated, although not necessary to do, we, we circulated the town core plan to referral agencies. For their review and comment and placed the recommended draft again on the website for review and comment. I also, uh, contacted directly again, uh, kind of did a refresh of all of our business owners, all of our local nonprofit, uh, groups that, um. Are located within the town core to also solicit their feedback and, and buy-in on the document before you. Um, during that period, no additional suggestions were indicated to staff. Uh, the town core plan, once again, is considered a specific area plan, which state law does not require to be ratified by the, by the voters. There are a few things that I just wanted to highlight in the document itself. Um, in your agenda on page eighty-one of two fifty-three, um. It discusses parking, uh, one action that, that came up, uh, was brought to my attention. Uh, is an action to prepare a long-term town core parking plan that maximizes the use of shared parking facilities. I just wanted to note that there is a fairly exhaustive section of parking, um, in the town core plan. Uh, the other two items that are kind of new, uh, to this version of the town core plan. Are, uh, town utilities getting its own section. That's on page eighty-three if you're following along. And as well as town core fire safety, uh, once again, a lot of input, uh, from department stakeholders. Whereas in previous, uh, plans and work that I've done for the town. Um, it's a lot of times been driven kind of solely, uh, by the planning department in a silo. This was really a, a comprehensive look to look at all the department's needs and how the interaction is, um, with this plan. So fairly proud to say that it's a, it, a comprehensive and exhaustive document for the terms of, of what it's meant for, which is a planning tool. To allow us to proceed with, um, additional studies, research, and also let developers know. What the expectations are as far as streetscape and, uh, landscaping pathways and all of that in the greater context of the town core. Um, the last thing I'll, I'll highlight for you, then I'll stop talking, is, uh, the maps at the end of this document. They're much more sophisticated than what we previously had. And that was really, um, you know, kudos really to the planning commission to highlight some things that, um, you don't know unless you, unless you know. So, um, there's the land use, the, the study area map, the first map in the document. Uh, highlights current unentitled vacant commercial properties in town. So it gives you an idea of where future growth might occur. Albeit, it's pretty scarce except for south of town hall here along Cave Creek Road. Um, then there was also a, um, one of the planning commissioners, uh, Commissioner Miller. Uh, suggested having kind of a public amenities map that shows where parking is, how circulation is. Um, much more than just a, a black line drawing that actually shows some, uh, some areas where crosswalks can be found and public parking can be found. So. Um, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Um, one, one last thing, we. As we look through this document, kind of at the, the outset, the staff redline plan that I discussed earlier. Um, we kind of went through and just deleted everything that we felt we had accomplished. And the planning commission made it very clear that just because an action within a goal has been accomplished, doesn't necessarily mean you throw the goal away. You look and see if there are any other actions to approve upon that goal and carry this plan forward for another life cycle of ten years. With that, that's my presentation, Mayor. Thank you.
Questions from council?
Luke, um, were there any major objections to the draft town core plan by the public? And if so, how were they addressed?
Nothing, nothing major that I could recall. Um, there were a few sections that. That just very loosely or in a nebulous manner kind of promoted creating certain synergies with businesses and areas. And there was a, um. A, a business owner in attendance that really didn't like government telling them where to locate. In relation to other businesses and thought that that was an overreach, but it was really just kind of a harmless, uh, way to, to, uh, develop a. You know, an idea within a document. So that was, that was able to be explained and, um, rationalized.
Um, and I assume that you'll be posting this, so people will have access to it and will be able to contact you if they have any questions.
Yes, it's been posted for the better part of this year.
Um, as a draft?
Mm-hmm. Uh, yeah, the planning commission recommended draft, which is what you have. And there, on our website, there's, uh, the ability to go in, review the document, send an email with any comments or suggestions. We've had that, uh, website active for, um. Want to say end of summer twenty twenty-three as this process has gone forward. So every update to the plan, every, every public meeting, all of those minutes and everything have kind of been in that. In that, uh, clearinghouse of information.
Now, I guess I'm going to call on Cynthia as I typically do every meeting, being a former plan commissioner. Uh, what was your experience? Did you, did you have anything in particular that stands out?
Um, in retrospect, I would say we spent a lot of time on detail, uh, sometimes down word by word, by paragraph by paragraph. But tried to emphasize a balance between all types of participants in the town core, equestrian, pedestrian, bicycles. Uh, motorists, parking, how all those things come together and can do so safely. So there was a lot of discussion about safety in the town core and making it, um, a positive experience for all different users.
Thanks.
I hope this is the right time to bring it up, but, and, and you can respond to this and other council members, uh, invite, invite them to respond as the time is appropriate. But I think it's important to have a goal to preserve and enhance views of hills, mountains from the town core. Walkways and businesses. And I would suggest as an action item that staff will meet with and encourage developers and builders. To encourage planned lot use that maximizes views of the nearby and distant hills, mountains, and mesas.
That's it. Okay. Are, are you, are you suggesting that as a, as, as a?
I am, yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, when, then, uh, we'll, we have to make that into a motion and, uh. Do, do we have the, is this the entire plan? This is a piece of it, isn't it?
This is the entire plan, soup to nuts, Mayor.
So. You have a suggestion where something like that might go and we could get a, a motion and then a?
Mayor?
Vote on that.
If I may, um, under the, on page nine, uh, the site design, uh, where it talks about, uh, buildings. And how they relate to one another and their surroundings, uh, there is a goal and action plan that says, uh, protect the forest character through dedicated open space buffers and protected view corridors. So that seems to fit along the same way.
Yeah, I, I'd like to state it a little bit more strongly, but I appreciate what you're saying. And I would enter my, uh, suggestion as a motion.
Okay, so, so yeah, specific language that you wanted to, uh, you, do you, is site design under that number one goal? Is that where you'd put that?
Yes.
And what would you like that to say?
Okay, and the goal would be to preserve and enhance views of the hills and mountains from the town core walking and, uh, walkways and distances. Uh, excuse me, and businesses. And the action would be staff will meet with and encourage developers and builders to encourage planned lot use. That maximizes views of nearby and distant hills, mountains, and mesas.
Does, does staff have objected to that?
No, Mayor. No, it's, as, as, um, council member Driscoll stated, it's, it's in there. I think this is a little bit more directive to that, to that goal and approach. So. If you have the language.
Language, yes, to the clerk campus meeting. Okay, so, uh, you've made a motion.
Aye.
Is there a second? I will second it.
Yeah.
Any discussion on the motion? Any counterviews? The voice vote then, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes six zero, so we'll add that. And if you'll see the tenant clerk afterwards.
I will do so.
Hand that over?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I guess we have public comment on this list. Anyone else has any, uh, thing they'd like to say?
No public input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, we're ready for a motion then. Since you had the first one, do you want to make a motion, Tom?
I suppose I can do that. Okay, we're on number?
Two.
Two. Oh, uh, this, this is a motion to approve resolution number R two zero two four dash fifteen. Adopting the two oh two four town core plan update.
Second.
Second.
Well, seconded by, by Dusty first. I heard him first, so, um.
Got it. Yeah, this is, this is a good document and what I like about it, and one of the things I like about it, and Luke may appreciate this, is it gives you flexibility that you need. So instead of getting into the weeds of things, it is a general plan and I think it's a good document and thank you.
So I think it's a good start. I mean, I thought that I read through the whole thing and I, I thought it was well done. Um, I've got a couple, couple of things that I would like to have the planning commission take a look at before we get to the next budget cycle. And that would be split more specifics on parking. Uh, I would also like to take, have them take a look at when we talk about the pathways, some kind of lighting for the pathways. Stumbling around, uh, in the dark when there's no moon out, probably not a good idea. So we do need to take a look at some kind of lighting for those pathways for a safety issue. And then the third thing, we never really talked about, I mean, we've had a couple, you know, folks come in and talk to us about the medians. But I would like the planning commission to come back and give us a recommendation on specifically what we should do with the medians. And with the edges of both roadways. I mean, we had a lot of presentations. There's been a lot of talk. I'd like to see some action on that. Just my thoughts.
Other comments? Should be?
Uh, no, I think, uh, the document is, it's an update from where we were ten years ago. Uh, and certainly will continue to be, uh, a living, breathing document as things progress.
Others?
Agree. I think I'm, I'm always happy to see public processes. I think it's very important to include our community in these types of plans and I'm glad you did it that way.
Yeah, I, I'm eager to see it prioritize this, the, because we have some things that are really high on here, but one of my favorites is traffic calming. Uh, and, uh, a, a design for the roadways and the medians and the road edges in a comprehensive manner. Uh, taking into account the business nature of the area. So, um, I'm anxious to get started. Uh, there's nothing financial here, so we'll have a voice, uh, voice vote on this. Uh, we have a motion and a second, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Run to number three, which is council consideration of first reading of ordinance number. Oh, twenty twenty-four dash zero six. An ordinance of the mayor and town and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending town code. Title Roman number eleven, business regulations, chapter one eleven. Peddlers, solicitors, and business licenses, and chapter one twelve, short-term rentals, and title Roman numeral fifteen, land usage. Chapter one fifty-one, building regulations, and amending the town of Cave Creek zoning ordinance. Supplement to fee schedule presented by the finance director. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so for, uh, this item here, related to the user fee study that was presented to council on September twenty-fourth. Um, this is taking some of the fees that were specifically identified in the town code and changing the reference to a fee schedule. Um, that we will be coming back December second, um, with that is, it has gone through the posting process. And, uh, that is required. And so we'll have that, um, uh, on December second to talk about the fees. Um, any changes that you may want to have, but I think we did a pretty exhaustive, um, discussion back on September twenty-fourth. So that's really all that this item is, is just trying to just clean up some of those items in the town code.
Questions? We did it exhaustively last time, I think, so.
Thanks.
There's public comment?
None for this item, Mayor?
Okay, we're looking for a motion then. Do you have a motion?
I'll make it.
Well, go.
You want to do?
Go, go ahead.
Motion to approve first reading of ordinance oh two oh two four dash oh six. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending town code title eleven. Business regulations, chapter one eleven, peddlers, solicitors, and business licenses. And chapter one twelve, short-term rentals, and title fifteen, land usage. Chapter one fifty-one, building regulations, and amending the town of Cave Creek zoning ordinance supplement to fee schedule.
Second.
Seconded by, uh, Mr. Bunch?
Well, it's something that you've been shooting for, for a long time. We're finally getting there.
Yeah, I always liked the financial stuff.
Yeah, I know you do.
You, you had the motion.
I'm only glad that I know my Roman numerals.
I'm proud of you.
Ernie, you had the second.
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, other, other comments? Okay, well, this is a voice vote. There's nothing financial. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. We've made the change. And you're still sitting there, so the next must be yours too.
Yes, it is.
Council discussion approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget transfers for fire and emergency. Council discussion approval of fiscal year 2024 budget transfers for fire and emergency medical presented by the finance director.
So as we are working on all the audit prep for fiscal year 24, uh, we did have an additional entry that we identified that ended up impacting, um, the budget transfers that are needed for fiscal year 24. So there is this one additional item. It is related to the remodel, um, construction project for the fire station. One of the entries that were required to record, so, um, when a construction project happens, either you hold back a retainage amount and not pay that amount to the contractor, or sometimes they will offer up securities in lieu of retainage. This particular project, it was a retainage amount. So that amount is actually costs that were incurred as of June 30th, just not paid. So we are required to record those expenditures and the liability. So that was an additional expenditure that, uh, puts the, um, fire budget, um, fire over budget by, the amount that we need is 294,650. And so we're requesting that that be transferred from the general fund contingency, which general fund contingency has more than adequate in the fiscal year 24 budget of, um, just over a million dollars to be able to cover that amount.
As I understand it, this is not an overrun on the project. It is, it is a financial getting the money in the right ear, the right columns, but for.
Correct.
Yeah. Other, uh, questions from council? Okay. There's public comment on this?
No input for this item, Mayor?
Okay. Uh, I'll make the motion. A motion to approve fiscal year 2024 budget transfers for fire and emergency medical.
Second.
Okay. Uh, I have no comments. Send me anything else.
Straightforward.
This will be a, uh, a roll call vote. Uh, is, yeah, roll call vote. This is financial. So, yeah.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Ogerton is absent. Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion carries, uh, six zero. Number five is council discussion approval of resolution number R twenty twenty four dash sixteen, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Miracopa County, Arizona, approving revisions to the town's water service adjustment policy presented by the finance director.
Thank you again. So the current water service adjustment policy that is in place was adopted by council back in April of 2015. And that policy authorizes one-time adjustments for, um, any sort of like leaks or, or unusual water activity, um, per customer. And there are a lot of long-term residents here. If it's like 20 years later and they have another leak and we're telling them, sorry, you had an adjustment, we can't do another one. The current policy, what it does when it, um, the adjustment removes the impacts of the tiered structure. So the more water you use, the, the higher the rate is that you pay, and it basically puts it at that lowest amount. There are a couple of town code sections that are applicable to, um, keeping systems in good repair and, and leaks. So these are geared towards, um, encouraging water conservation. What we're trying to do here is balance a little bit between customer relations and, um, water conservation policies. So the proposed revision that staff is requesting, um, is no more than one adjustment per customer account within a 60-month service period instead of just one adjustment forever. That's actually, um, fairly common in what I was doing when I was trying to find similar policies in other agencies. I did see some that were sixty-month. I saw some that were three years. I saw, um, even one that was two years. So if, um, you wanted to do a shorter timeframe, but we really wanted to continue with the concerns about water conservation and, um, being able to have adequate water. So we kept that at the 60 months. But we did include in there a provision for the town manager to authorize any additional adjustments based on any unusual circumstances. So if it was something just really strange that is like, yeah, it's four years and six months and it was this unusual situation, town manager could say, you know what? I will authorize that. Um, there was a variety of miscellaneous clarifications, um, in alignment with current practices, um, that were done within the policy. For instance, one of the things that we ask for is, uh, copies of the invoices to show that they had the repairs done to their, their system. Um, and we are asking for the, uh, policy change to be effective with the October twenty, twenty twenty four service period. I mentioned earlier about the way that the adjustments are calculated. So this kind of walks through the rate for the lowest amount, um, in this, and this is just an example. It, it's, um, the rates are different depending upon meter size and which water system they're in and whether it's boosted or not boosted. But in this particular example, so, um, it has from zero to 10,000 gallons at three 25, and then it goes up to four 50, and then five 75, seven 50, and then nine 25 from there. So based off of this particular, um, set of assumptions, if 72,318 gallons were used, the bill for the water usage portion would be four 91. And the adjustment to the lowest tier amount of three 25, um, would be a, the difference between the two of $256. So that's how we calculate what the adjustments are. Um, over the past 12 months, um, we have done 54 adjustments. The total dollar amount of those adjustments is, um, over 56,000. They have ranged anywhere from $50 to $5,000. The customers, um, when you look at the count of the customers, that's about 1.2% of approximately 4,500 water accounts. And the, um, adjustments for the dollar amount is less than 1% of the 7.8 million of water usage revenue. So these adjustments are not material by any, any means that have been done. Um, as far as the impacts of changing the policy, uh, we really don't expect that it's going to have a significant impact on the number or amount of adjustments made. It's pretty rare, um, but there have been occasions where we have felt like we think that an adjustment would be warranted. We do believe that this would help support positive customer relations. And as a recent example of, um, someone with, uh, who would benefit from what we've put into this policy is someone who's on a fixed income, had a pipe that broke and ended up with a $6,000 bill for just the one month, approximately 6,000, when this person's bill is normally around $135 a month. And, um, this person had, was already given adjustment back in 2017, um, for a leak issue that was for $250. So this would create, um, something to be able to benefit this person, to be able to help them out because this person is on a, on a fixed income and all of a sudden going from $135 to a six, almost $6,000 bill is huge. Um, I do have here in the strategic plan, so under fiscal sustainability, one of the items that's discussed there is updating financial policies. So, um, this is one of the policies that we are updating. Under economic vitality, um, part of what I was keying in here on this particular priority for the goal was, uh, about, uh, customer focused, responsive to support residential business growth, long-term success. Safe and vibrant community. So this, um, goes towards the water conservation aspect. So we did not feel that making this change was going to, um, severely impact, um, the concerns of, of water conservation, but allow for, um, some consideration of customer relations. So that's what I have. Are there any questions?
I'm, I'm considering a motion to add something to this. I, I wonder if Sean, would you come up here? I'd, I'd like to, uh, the, the thing that we're, we're going to have the smart meters in, and I present, and one of the, the reasons for doing that is so that customers can monitor their water use. And presumably if something happened, they'd be able to catch it before the bill came in.
Yes, we are in the middle of updating the Cave Creek water meters. Uh, we'll have to do a separate project to do Desert Hills, which will allow us to get, uh, more real-time user days. It still requires some input, um, by the customers and actually some monitoring by us. In the case, this one example, uh, Sher brought up is that, the way the system works, it looks for differences in the system and over a period of time. So they might've caught it. They might be able to set a parameters. That's something we can work with the customers on, but it's a much of fairness question. If someone has an egregious leak and they happen to be away for a long weekend, you could still lose a considerable amount of water on your property. So the thought was that in conjunction with our goals to give more tools to the customers so they can see their usage and, and curtail their usage. There's also a fairness question. I think that's what Sher is trying to bring forward. I think it would be good for us to do this amendment.
The, the, what I was thinking of doing, proposing is that for eligibility, any recipient must be a participant in any town conservation leak monitoring program with the ideas, i- is this a voluntary thing where they have to sign up, give an email, have some kind of contact? Is, is there any, um, you know, and if, if they are, I mean, I'm trying to sell the program. I'm trying to sell your leak monitoring and conservation.
Yeah. As, as we roll the system out, um, it's called my 360. Neptune 360 is our metering system. People will be able to create a login account and, and tie back to their metered system. So it is something that they need to log in and set up. And then so there's also training involved with setting up the parameters, you know, just logging in will give you access to the data set. But if you want to do things like set the parameters, that's something we're going to have to work on outreach for. So, uh, I guess that could be, I'm not sure if requiring that is part of it.
That's what I'm asking is, is, does, does something like this help sell water conservation and sign up for our system to save water? And it is, is it recently, uh, is it something that, that you?
We want to try and do an outreach program. Once the program, we actually have, um, uh, first collector sites up and operational. We have the second collector site, uh, is soon to be operational. We are getting the data. We're trying to get the, the program rolled out in the next couple of months with the setup behind the scenes so that customers can get onto the system. So in a few months, we'll be ready to implement that. Whether we require that as, as a requirement for an adjustment, I'm not sure how we make that, uh, because they may already be on the system. They might, again, they might've been away for a long weekend when a pipe broke.
Well, see, all they have to do is sign up. They, they don't, they don't have to actually monitor it. They, they don't, it, it's a, it's a no effort way to get more people to sign up for the system. If, if no one signs up, it's not going to work. I mean, it does not going to do any good. We're not going to get the benefits that we'd like to see it. This, it would be one way to, to encourage people to sign. All they have to do, if they want to be eligible for the, if something does happen, they've got an insurance policy. I mean, I can see a marketing advantage for people to sign up. Hey, if you sign up, we're going to protect you if something does happen. So, um. Yeah.
I, I wouldn't have an issue with, with that if, if it was part of the process of, okay, and we're also going to require that you set up an account, um, on the my 360.
Yeah, get some training. So, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, how, how are you going to sell your my 360?
We're talking about right now, working with the vendor of actually setting it up. And then we were going to do some outreach. We're going to work with Bo, but this, yeah, that's something I don't see. We're going to have to do it.
And it's going to be voluntary. Give away pencils and pens and, I mean, I mean, there's, there is a marketing effort here to get people to sign up. If they don't sign up, it's a wasted investment. So, well, we'll hear what.
This isn't an ordinance. You can just put that in the policy. I mean, with it, right? I mean, what you're saying is, if you want the benefit of having only getting one write-off a lifetime, then you need to agree to, to, to enter this policy. Just put whatever the mayor just said. I don't know. I don't understand all the widgets. That can go in the policy.
Yes.
Okay.
That not require you had the smart meter. If you didn't have the smart meter.
Well, I say, but I said here, um, that they must be a participant, um, in any town, uh, conservation leak monitoring. If, if they're unable to participate, then it's a moot point.
You understood his point. Can you, can you just put it in the policy, what he's saying?
Yeah, I think we did.
I mean, I would, I would make that number two after, between purpose and service area. Uh, I'd have eligibility. It'd be a number there. And, uh, it would be, um, that would be it.
The question I was asking is, is there automatic notification? The system is set up that, uh, once you input your information, you can, uh, get a text and or an email out of the system. Once you set your, your parameters, which would be, we're trying to learn the system ourselves, could, could be monthly usage, it could be daily usage. You can set your own parameters within that system and get whatever notifications. And then you could look at it anytime you so want to. So, yeah, it seems like it's a, it'd be a good addition, I guess, add that in. And then honestly, as we see issues come up with the meters, we actually do change them out with the newer meters, uh, both in Cave Creek and in Desert Hills with the meters failed. We, we changed about to newer technology and we're looking to get a collector site out in Desert Hills. So we hope, uh, later this year, um, this fiscal year, we'll actually have a collector site operational in Desert Hills. So then we start rolling the system out in Desert Hills.
Okay. Uh, does council want to weigh in on this?
No, another question after you get past this one.
Okay. We'll, uh, we'll have like the public comment on this and then, uh, then the comment session, we can discuss this more if somebody thinks of a, something I haven't thought of here. Ernie, go ahead.
Yeah, Sean, uh, on a typical, uh, meter install between the meter and the house, where is the shut-off valve that's on the customer side?
By code, it's supposed to be a shut-off valve within three feet of the meter.
Within three feet?
Yeah. And then we also have what we call the angle stop that comes up. So, um, you know, we have our angle stop on our side that you, you should can turn off. So.
Yeah. The reason, reason I ask is, is I know that a lot of older homes will have, will happen to shut off actually at the house. Uh, where, where the supply comes in there, you might have 20, 30 or 200 feet of line between the meter and the, is it still illegal for, for the, for the user to turn the water off at the meter in our code? Because it was, I remember sitting fighting, fighting for us to not do that and they did it anyway.
Yeah, you believe that is in code that they're not supposed to touch the, the meter or the, the, what we consider the town side of the meter, the downstream corpse.
And it's just, it's a simple quarter turn ball valve.
Yeah.
Yeah. That you can do with a crescent wrench or anything, but they are subject to fines if they do that, if they have, they have.
Users will call us up and are comfortable about that, or they know that they're not supposed to, so they'll call us up and we'll actually do that for them.
Yeah. See, and somebody will come out and turn that water off for you pretty soon. Yeah. Um, Mayor, I would request that future. In the future, you actually look at that, if there is a line break between the meter and the, and the, and the, the house, that homeowner may be able to turn that quarter turn valve without getting in trouble.
Well, we may have to get you back on council to get that.
I, I, I fought for that. I thought this is the silliest thing because.
Eighteen years you haven't got it done?
No, no, it was, and, and, and I think that was probably 2009 and I'm sitting there going, no, you don't want to do this. But it didn't make any difference. They didn't want to listen. Nobody ever seen a valve before. Can you believe that?
I can't. Other questions from council?
Just a brief question on the water adjustment rates. Has that included commercial, um, accounts as well as residential?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, see, no further questions. Uh, there is public comment on this.
No requests for this item, Mayor?
Okay. Well, um, and, um, I would like to make a motion, and that is that we insert between one and two, uh, a bullet point that says eligibility. Any recipient must be a participant in any town conservation leak monitoring program.
Second.
And I guess, um, let's, let's do the motion here. Uh, so a voice vote on that motion, just the motion to add that. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it six zero and we now have a revised uh, document here. Um, and so we'll need a motion on the revised document.
I'll get it. Motion to approve resolution, uh, number 2024 dash 16, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Miracopa County, Arizona, approving revisions to the town's water service adjustment policy.
Second.
And Mayor, I'm, I'm going to say I'm hap, I'm happy to see the, uh, the latitude given to the town manager on this because there's people in this room who are aware of the power of Cave Creek wash. Covers up roads and they have to bring heavy equipment, move rocks out of the way. And it also has ability to wash away people's horse stalls and break their water line, in which case they feed into the 15,000 cubic feet per second going down the, down the wash. I've seen that. And when that does happen, those poor people, it's an act of God. They can't help it.
Other comments? Seeing none?
Yeah. Ernie, uh, staff could take that into account when they're looking at this. I mean, I'm trying to make it so that it's less likely to happen. So hopefully staff will, uh, talk to the people who are so vulnerable and try to deal with it now. Uh, talk to the people who are so vulnerable and try to deal with it now.
Well, they just need to sell their property, move away from the wash.
Okay. So we'll have a voice vote on this. There's nothing financial. So all those in favor of the revised policy, so by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. And we're on to number six, which is the council discussion approval of a contract award to. Prospice LLC DBA newer contracting. For the fiscal year twenty twenty five, Cave Creek Utility Public Works Tenant Improvement Project for an amount up to five hundred and sixty five thousand. Eight hundred and sixty three dollars. And would you correct my pronunciation? What, how do you pronounce that? P R O S P I C E.
I was saying it was pro.
I think it's pro spice.
Oh, good. That's what I said.
But mirror contracting is the.
Okay.
Um, good evening, mayor and council. Excuse me. All of a sudden I get up here and I can't, I have a frog in my throat. Uh, tonight we're talking about the Cave Creek Public Utilities, um. Utility and Public Works Tenant Improvement. Uh, we're looking at, for those of you who don't know it, we've entered into an agreement with. The food bank, Foothills Food Bank to build a thirty two hundred square foot gray shell area on the east side of the building. It's been highlighted in yellow where that building is located. Uh, we engaged Arc Sol Architects to lay out the space for us. Uh, so that we would have, um. Work area for our workers and our managers in both utilities and public works. To operate out of there. Um, we put together a budget, uh, where we're tracking what we spend to date, how we're going to spend it. And it includes the amount that we're going in for the mirror contracting, um. Amount. And so far it's trending under our projected budget. On. October twenty fourth, we had a bid opening. We had advertised it in the paper and for, uh, three weeks. Um, on, on the website where we received seven bids, we had a walkthrough. We had three addendums during the contract. And so, uh, we are recommending to that mirror contracting, who was the low bidder. Uh, we, after checking references. Uh, the other thing that we are doing in the amount that we are looking at, and you have an engineer who can't add one and five and come up and still comes up with five. Uh, but, uh, we ended up asking for five hundred and sixty five thousand eight hundred and sixty three to give us twenty four thousand dollars under the town managers. Um, or any as an owner's allowance for things that may come up during the construction. So that we can make the authorization and make changes as they come up.
Why are you making, why isn't your scope tight enough that you don't make changes? I would call that a. A change order, which are. A best practice not to have.
I understand the best practice is not to have. We're looking at less than five percent in change orders. And unfortunately, things happen during construction that you, I mean, we're talking about a gray shell building. It shouldn't change. They've given us pri- fixed prices and they have some of their own allowances. But what we don't want to have happen is have to delay it. For three weeks to be able to come back to council to make an adj- an adjustment if we have to. The town manager has the twenty five thousand dollar authority. We just want to make it. But if. You've awarded a fixed price contract, then he cannot make that. So we, what we're doing is we're. Uh, putting the allowance in at this time that the town manager still can have the opportunity to make changes should it happen. And with that, the motion.
Questions?
It's shocking to me, the difference between the high and low bid. Two hundred and forty thousand.
Yes, for the same thirty two hundred square, for the same, uh, two, uh, thirty two hundred or thirty three hundred square feet, the same layout, architectural plans. Same allowances, because we actually in the addendum, we said, okay, give us this much for a refrigerator. Put in this much of allowance for a refrigerator, put this much allowance in for this and that, where we said, so everyone was bidding off the same number. So it wasn't like somebody was going to give us five hundred dollars or a hundred and fifty dollar refrigerator and somebody else was going to give us a five thousand dollar refrigerator.
It looks like somebody did.
Yeah. But again, the addendums, we went through three addendums, frequently asked questions and every contractor was, every contractor was awarded those, um, that information.
Other questions from council? Okay, uh, there is public comment on this.
Yeah, we input for this item, mayor.
All right. And we're looking for a motion. Ernie?
Sure. Let's, let me spend some more money here. Move to approve a contract with Prospice LLC DBA doing business as mirror contracting for the twenty twenty five fiscal year twenty twenty five. Cave Creek Utility Public Works Tenant Improvement Project for amount up to five hundred and sixty five thousand eight hundred and sixty three dollars.
Second.
Finally going to get them in an office. It's not on wheels. Always worried they were going to leave. Well. There we go. Also, it, you know, we may have to evict the termites out of the old building, but you know, we've tried that. But they've taken a lot with them. Yeah, they won't let you use the good stuff anymore for those.
Congratulations on getting seven bids. I think our mayor is very happy about that.
Okay, other questions, other comments, other comments? Okay, uh, was this financial roll call, please?
Council member bunch?
Yes.
Council member Driscoll?
Yes.
Council member McGuire?
Yes.
Council member Rhodes? Council member Augur, absent, Vice Mayor Roye?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Next on the agenda is the council discussion adoption of integrated utility master plan. I guess we're, we're calling it the I U M P.
Evening, mayor and council. Um, so yeah, tonight I'd like to talk to you about the adoption of our integrated utility master plan. It's been a plan that we've done a lot of work on. We've actually, uh, came and talked to council a few times about the document. What I handed out was the executive summary and that's attached actually to the, the back of the document. While we, in our previous meetings, I've handed out the draft. Moving forward, we're actually going to, uh, keep hard copies available and. Yes.
Do you have extra copies for anybody in the audience who might want one?
Uh, I've got three extra.
I just want to know why David has moved. Yeah, we're used to seeing you.
So the, and master plan process has taken a while for us to get through, partly because we had to go do a lot of exercises on, on, uh, putting together information about the system to make sure that we can do a good master plan. Uh, but of August of last year, we actually talked to council about some of the basic assumptions. At that time, we talked about things like fire flow assumptions and some, uh, peak factors and some other things that we want to get council direction before we move forward with the planning document. Which we did complete. And in September this year, we came back to council and gave a draft of the report. Which does include physical recommendations and a, uh, uh, capital project list. So, uh, at that meeting, we actually, uh, got some input, but we also had to complete some final master plan work. Um, some project scopes had to get completed. That's why it's taken September till tonight to actually finish the document. But. What we have before you is a very good executive summary. Um, again, it's a, a, a shorter form of a, of a very thick document. That summarizes what we tried to accomplish. Again, this is an integrated utility master plan. What does that mean? Um, in the water industry, we used to do individual master plans for different areas, your water system, your wastewater system, your reclaimed water, even water resources. But in reality, we have to look at them all together. They all feed into each other. If we don't have the available water resources, we can't distribute that. We can't treat that water. We can't move it to the customers. And then. In our case, we have some of our customers, not as many that provide wastewater flow back to us. That wastewater flow then becomes a water resource. So it's best to look at them all together because then you can answer the questions. What if, what if we can get more sewer customers? What does that do for our overall water portfolio? And then where does that water go to? So that's why we do an integrated master plan where the. Previous plans, which were done in twenty thirteen, were individual chapters or individual plans. This is. Individual chapters that feed up to an overall program for us to move forward with. One of the biggest and scariest things that the town's facing in the master plan helps quantify is the water resource issue that we have. Um, right now between our CAP water supplies and the limited amount of water we can get out of the desert hills wells. And if you factor in the effluent as a water supply, because that's something that we need to, um, uh, meet our demands with our, uh, contractual obligation with Rancho Manana. We have about twenty, twenty eight hundred acre feet of, um, water supplies. Sounds pretty good. When you look at a graph though, because what we did is we actually looked at all the buildable areas in the town, including those areas that have a water certificate, a certificate of assured water supplies, existing neighborhoods that were, um, platted. And have water service prior to the certified water supply rules going to effect in, in nineteen eighty. And then we looked at other properties that could connect to the system. And just looking at those, you know, there's potential for some growth and even there are large tracts of state land within the, in the town. We accounted for those, but in reality, their pre-annexation development agreement requires them to bring water resources. So the brown line at the top is something, someone would have to, to develop those properties. We'd have to have someone bring the land to us. And once we had that all together, we mapped that out as far as when we think development may occur in those areas, which allowed us to look at a twenty five year planning horizon. But the, the real takeaway is that by twenty twenty seven, we expect a reduction in the, in the Colorado River water allocation that town will have. Um, at this point, we don't have an answer. Uh, the master plan lists a couple of different scenarios. We don't know how much that will be. And I know, uh, uh, as town staff and town leaders have been going out and talking to things like the governor's office, uh, Arizona Department of Water Resources, Arizona Water Banking Authority. And, and saying, you know, Cave Creek is in a unique situation and the fact that our water portfolio is not very diverse. So if there's a cut in our Colorado River allocation, which currently is about ninety percent of our water portfolio. It directly impacts our ability to provide water to our current customers. So, um, that's something we're very, taking very seriously. And that's why the master plan outlines several process, or several projects and, and, um, things that we need to be working on right now, moving forward. And the action items after this is actually talking about rehabbing some of the existing wells to bring them back online as a water resource for the town. So we have both near term and long term water projects we're working on. Near term for me is again, uh, uh, January twenty twenty seven, we expect there to be reductions. Um. The reductions are being coming out of the work that's going on in Colorado River Basin states, the, the five basin states that actually get water and with Mexico, water access to be delivered to Mexico from Colorado River. Once the federal government actually is the overall policing agency. So they have to determine what's going to happen after twenty twenty six, when the current. Uh, drought management plan is in place between all the begration states expires. One of the options might be them just to continue moving forward with that plan could be other alternatives. So we actually had to again, plan for the worst, hope for the best. And that's what we're, we're aiming for. But we actually do have multiple things moving forward. We do have the physical interconnected with the city of Phoenix. So we're looking at, and we had these conversations with them about additional water exchanges with them and or storage with them that we can actually withdraw water. One of the, the, one of the two IGAs we have with Phoenix allows us to recharge with Phoenix. And for the last few years, we've been recharging the unused portion of our Colorado River water. With the CAP and some recharge facilities. But one thing that will give us access directly to wet water and those recharge facilities are a great thing. You generate storage credits, but we can't. Directly get access to that. So we can do water exchanges. So one of our thoughts is if we actually exchange or put water in the ground with Phoenix. They can actually deliver that water to us in the same year back through the interconnect. So that's something we're looking at. Um, we're looking for other short term supply options. Can we do water exchanges with the water credits that the town has to help bridge any gaps that happen? Restarting the existing wells in Cave Creek, you know, we do have three wells in Desert Hills that have been functionally operating. Um, their capacity has dropped, but can we get some of the existing wells? In the Cave Creek system back online and what can we do with that water? And then water banking, again, that's recharging, but there's also a water banking authority in Arizona. Um, they have been, uh, banking for a number of years and putting groundwater, our, our water into the ground. And generating storage credits, um, uh, for any municipal and industrial CAP water subcontractors similar to the town. So we have access to doing that. So I, uh, working on getting what's called a firming agreement in place to bring back to council, which would allow us that water to be transmitted to the town via the CAP canal system. The problem is that that, uh, water banking authority doesn't have its rules in place for what happens post twenty twenty seven. So, but it's another tool in our tool chest of moving forward. In addition to that, you know, we have customer outreach. Um, the, the water resource policy that we got addressed today, the leak a policy sort of addresses instantaneous. If someone has a catastrophic failure, but. Moving forward, we want to do a lot more outreach and it help customers, uh, conserve water more. Upgrading the meters will better track the water usage, giving them better access to their instantaneous water use. We hope, help changes water patterns and water use patterns. We already have things put into town council code, uh, or town code that allows us to move forward if we get into a shortage situation. In addition to all that, we have long term, uh, policy goals that we're working on. One of the biggest ones is the Bartlet Dam project. So we are now officially a member. Uh, we've paid our first bill, um, and we were voted in and we, uh, we asked for and received a thousand acre feet of storage capacity in the new, uh, Verde River Storage Project. That's actually technically what they call it. Um, I went to the first, uh, meeting last week. So, um, we are now a member in that and that's something that we look forward that in the next less than ten years, hopefully will something become available for us as, as a water resource. And then we're going to be looking at any, anything else, um, as staff or we have a, a group meeting together. Uh, with some of the elected officials, the mayor and vice mayor to discuss, uh, other options and things we need to be looking at. But we had to build this into our capital program. And as I present the capital program, you'll see some large cost to water. Water is not cheap, but it's something we need in order to secure the town's water, uh, future. So the water system itself, the master plan, again, there's, there's a couple of chapters that deal with this. Um, uh, but specifically you looked at the growth, performance and condition of the existing system. The growth is what do we need to meet future demands that we expect to be on the system? Uh, performances, again, how do we distribute that, um, uh, water around? And are we, are we distributing, is our system set up properly right now? Do we need to do things like look at pressure zone changes or the pressure reducing valves that we need to optimize? And then the condition is just the overall condition. And I sat here before many times where we've had to, to make emergency, uh, repairs to the water system. And just today. We did have a break on our Cloud Road water line by thirty eighth street, which put a large section of this town out of water for a few hours while they had to shut that line down. Um, that's the type of things that, you know, that's actually the growth is a second, uh, feed to the west Cave Creek, uh, west of Cave Creek wash is the replacement of that water line. But it's really a condition issue. The, the line was put in with a poor quality material, uh, poor bedding material, uh, poor bedding conditions. And we have that a lot in the system itself. So it's something we struggle with. But we've identified some things that we could look at, including our water treatment plant. Right now we have adequate capacity. Um, we have a, a hybrid plant that actually has West Tech filters and the Paul filters. Um, we're looking to get that permit, operation permit extended for another seven years. And in conjunction with the, uh, the water, uh, the city of Phoenix interconnect, that should provide most of the town's treated water needs for a number of years. Um, but in the future, we need to start planning for either upgraded or significant upgrade of that plant. We need to start doing that now because we need to build that in and get the funding put in place so that we can. Get that funding ready in a, you know, seven to 10 years when we need it. And as always, I see the bottom of the cap pipeline improvements. We're always, you know, that's, that's one of our single points of failure in the system, which is, is very nerve wracking for me and the staff. On the wastewater side, again, same thing, growth, performance, condition. Um, for growth, we do, we have identified several, uh, dry sewer areas that were, or there's three subdivisions that were constructed with dry sewers. How do we get those, those sewer lines activated? Then how can we work with those customers? And then the fourth area we talked about was the Black Mountain Sewer Area. So it's not a neighborhood, but it's the area east of Cave Creek Road. That is currently on septic systems and it would be well served by a sewer system. It's just because of the topography out there. It's a very expensive project. If I remember, it's about a seven million dollar estimate to, to run sewers in Black Mountain. We also want to look at the performance of the system. We have three lift stations, but, uh, I've been back council many times talking about the Rancho Manana lift station upgrades. We've done that site. As staff, we've been working on the other two, the Chiparosa, which we have a capital project this year and also our stagecoach lift station. And even the forest mains on that, obviously we had the, uh, the catastrophic break on the Rancho Manana forest main. Um, that we're trying to work around. We've, we did the emergency improvements. We have to do a cleaning and assessment of all our forest mains moving forward. And we're looking at doing some improvements at the treatment plant itself. You know, our, our wastewater system is not big. Um, it was constructed in two thousand and ten, but it's, it wastewater operations are harsh environment and it runs twenty four seven. Some of the water system, um, but they, it, it takes a beating on the equipment. And as we're getting close to fifteen years old on just that infrastructure that we built in two thousand and ten. Uh, we need to be starting looking and, and planning for replacements and upgrades and maintenance. So, and then as always, we have things like the, um, looking at our collection system and doing things. So, and then as always, we have things like the, um, looking at our collection system and doing things like manhole condition assessments and manhole repairs and line repairs. So what all this is still down to is when we did the master plan is a capital improvement list. It's not a, um, uh, there's individual project scopes and we actually placed them in the master plan. And executive summary, you'll see summary tables sort of on a twenty five year planning horizon, which we looked at prioritization and tried to prioritize itself. The next task for staff though is to figure out how we can afford to pay for all this. And then is there things that we need to push around? So again, this is not fixed in stone and with it, when you do a master plan like this, then the next step is to now figure out how you implement that. And then you, you, uh, by having the master plan, you have the overall guidance. And then this helps you to still down year to year, what you need to be doing. And then also making sure that you don't lose track of what needs to get done. Some of the numbers are very big. I'll admit that, but again, this is a twenty five year capital program summary that you're looking at right now. And the, on the, the, and water CIP, the total cost, um, you'll see the first column or the middle column is for Cave Creek water. And then we broke out Desert Hills water. The seventy seven million dollars does include the city of Phoenix interconnect project is currently active. So, um, this project list actually starts in twenty, our current fiscal year. So that project does show up in that. So that's a portion of that thirty million dollars is about seventeen million dollars in the city of Phoenix interconnect shows up there. But there's a lot of other projects that we've identified. And the first list, uh, for both the water CIPs is you see water resources. We looked at, uh, um, you know, we built in the cost of rehabbing existing wells or even drilling new wells in Cave Creek. But then we also split future water costs between the two companies. Water resources is not cheap. We had to come up with some estimates of what it might cost us. And we're hearing stuff like up to thirty thousand dollars per acre foot to get a hundred acre feet of secured water at this point. And that's what we'd be looking for. So we've built that in on a twenty year, five year pro, uh, projection. We think in the next five years, we need to probably be looking and building up the funds to allow us to make a purchase. And then if another purchase, probably another five to ten years out, depending on how things go with this, the Colorado River allocations. The wastewater side, again, twenty nine million dollars spread over twenty five years. So a lot of that is just maintenance. And then again, we have the collection system. There's a lot of repairs we need as the, the system continues to age. Although it's not growing, it is aging. So it's something we need to be working on. Um, and the reclaimed water system is, uh, currently all the effluent from our water reclamation facility goes up to the Rancho Manana Golf Course. But one of the things that got identified in the plan was to get a, another beneficial use out of that water. Right now the golf course can't take all the water that we deliver to them in conjunction with the backwash water from our treatment plant at, at certain times of the year. So by getting a beneficial use out of that water, we can send that to the city of Phoenix. And we've actually had a conversation with them about doing a water exchange. So that now, uh, what is currently overflowing the lakes at Rancho Manana becomes actually a water resource for the town. And we can look at things like if we can bring the wells back in, in the town core. Um, and if they have water quality issues, we can maybe use that for irrigation water instead of trying to go to the cost of treating it and then work on a larger water exchange with Phoenix. But that's something the master plan did point out that's, it's a project that the town would help balance our water resources. If we had that connection, that agreement with Phoenix. And again, this, the next step in this is to, as a staff to come forward with five, five year capital programs, which are funded to first year, and then look at larger things like ten years when we do things like rate studies to try and figure out how we can fund all this for the town. So what we're asking tonight, uh, we didn't do it by resolution. We're just asking by a motion, uh, to adopt the integrated utility master plan as presented. And as we brought forward to council a couple of times during the process, uh, as the, um, uh, planning framework to manage the town's utility systems. So it's a, it becomes a bit of a living document. And then it's how we interpret some of it moving forward, but it does give us that known issues and things that we need to be working towards. And we as staff then have something to come forward to. It also provides some good performance criteria. So as projects move forward, we can evaluate the system better. So I think, um, and I think the input that we've received by council when we've brought it forward. And I'll give a lot of thanks to both staff and to their consultant team who did, I think, a really good job. And this would be a good document for the town. We'll probably look to update this in the next five years to do a whole, real wholesale update. We might in, do individual sections as required, especially water resources. It's such an ongoing issue for us. But at least we know now what, what potentially we're, and as we hone in on what's going to happen with the Colorado River supplies, we might tweak that section to come up with preferred recommendations a little bit, or strengthen those recommendations a little bit more. So with that, I can answer any questions that council may have.
Very colorful report, Sean. Keeps me awake. My question, however, is you said that ninety percent of our portfolio is CAP water. What's the other, as I understood, we were getting basically all our water from CAP. So what's the other ten percent?
When we look at overall our portfolio, we include the, the over two hundred acre feet that we get of the Desert Hills wells. And then there's two hundred acre feet of, of effluent. So when we look at the overall balance, we include those two numbers.
Other questions? Okay, well, I'll make this motion. If I can find it. Motion to adopt the integrated utility master plan.
Second.
I was around for the first one, for the twenty thirteen. And this is extraordinarily higher quality work. It really gives us something we can deal with. That plan was so high level. I don't think anyone ever looked at it again, other than a few details about it. So this is extremely high quality work. I mean, there's, the, the projects on there, I think, are right down, uh, right on target. We need more water. We need reliable water, need reliable equipment, and it's going to cost. I, I think it's, it really looks affordable to me because we're going to start, um, lapping those bonds were put in place, sixty six million dollars worth of bonds were put in place twenty years ago. And so starting in twenty twenty seven through twenty thirty, they start to roll off, completely paid off. They're dropping at about four and a half million a year. We're about twenty million dollars roughly, twenty twenty four at this point. And so, uh, my, my intent would be to use bonds is to, because you can borrow a million dollars and only pay seventy thousand dollars a year versus paying all one million dollars in the same year. That's how we keep the two things bonding for the improvements. And the second thing is the roll off of the current bonds, which hits the average bill, almost fifty bucks a month in some cases. Uh, will allow us to be, allow us to afford this. So I'm really encouraged by both the quality of the plan and our ability to, uh, to fund it and to, uh, really get the, the town's utility systems, which is half the town. That's half of our town budget is utility systems.
I think it's a good job.
Others?
I think you have some good partners who helped you with this plan, including Black and Beach and also Arizona Water Buffalo. GHD, so yeah, between all of the entities that worked on it, it's well done. I find it as a communications person extraordinarily interesting that the graphic design is the parched desert. Instead of actually people who use the water, that might be something to consider in the future. Just because, you know, water is mostly, the water that we use is for portable purposes.
Yeah, from two thousand and thirteen and now eleven years, we have a much clearer view of what it is. So it's very comprehensive, uh, document here.
And what else? Sean, I'd also like to make a comment about your personal input into this. I think you're doing a magnificent job. I just can't believe the amount of work, the scope, every, every nut and bolt in this, uh, town is being, uh, looked at and, and I, I just want to, from my standpoint, and that this kind of work is the work I did professionally. And I got a great deal of admiration and thank you for all your hard work and the people that work for you on behalf of the town. I think you're doing a magnificent job for us.
Thank you for that, but I give so much credit to the staff we have. So, and our consultant teams who've actually had really good luck, but thank you.
We do know how great you are, Sean, and we appreciate it.
Every time I walk by his office, I look in and say, get to work.
Yeah.
Okay, this will have a voice vote on this. So, um, oh, we have a public comment? Yes, we do, public comment.
None for this item, Mayor?
Uh, voice vote, all those in favor of the utility master plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, Sean. Uh, next is, uh, something right out of the master plan.
Sean.
Council discussion approval of a professional services agreement with Black and Beach Corporation to provide a review of the treatment options for the town's existing water well, well water for an amount up to twenty nine thousand, nine hundred and forty three dollars and zero cents. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I actually like to present a, a joint presentation on items eight and nine on the agenda because they feed into the same project. They're both in relation to, um, uh, trying to reactivate the town's existing wells. They require two separate actions, ones with Black of each professional services and others with Clear Creek. But, uh, if council will allow me, indulge me, I'd like to do one presentation and you can do your two separate motions. So this is coming out of the utility master plan. The town does have wells and next graphic will show that. And there's actually the old water company had the foresight to actually do a well, raw water well line through the town core to bring the, the, as they completed the water treatment plant, they, they were bringing the well water back to the treatment plant to provide a backup supply to the water treatment plant. And then eventually they actually had to treat the water quality of the wells. Arsenic was the main issue. But since the town bought the system in two thousand and seven, a lot of the wells, uh, have not been used. The last wall to be used was the Vermish Well out in Desert, Desert Awareness Park. But because of what we're expecting to see in the shutting, uh, the, the shut, um, reduction in our Colorado River supplies by, uh, January twenty twenty seven, it makes sense to see if these wells can become operational and how it impacts the town. If we can get one well operational at two hundred gallons a minute from a utility, we de-rate that. We call it a firm capacity. If we were, uh, if I, at seventy five percent of utilization, if I can get twenty five, seventy five percent utilization of a two hundred gallon a minute well, that's two hundred acre feet a year of new water that can help us bridge a gap moving forward to make sure that I can ensure the town's customers, um, after twenty twenty seven, until we can get other things in place can help, help get that water there. So that's why we're very interested in seeing what wells, uh, can be rehabbed in the town. And we're doing it, uh, two scopes of work because the different consultants have different expertise. We have, um, uh, Black of each, which was break very second, but I'll, I'll bring forward Clear Creek. Clear Creek is, uh, looking at doing the hydrological. That's what their specialty is. And they'll be helping us evaluate both the, the, the well, helping us design if we're going to equip a well. And they can tell us, uh, with the, what, um, water quantity we can get out of that well reliably. Then once we figure out what water we can get out of it, we have to figure out what we can do with it. And that's why the Black and Beach scope will work is can we bring that to the water treatment plant? Our water treatment plant is now, uh, got an extra nuance to it because it actually has two different treatment trains. We have the West Tech filters, which uses a feric and iron oxide media, um, to help coagulate it. And then we have the Paul filters, which use a, an alum, different, different, completely different treatment train. So if we want to bring the well water in, we have to decide which train it can go into. So our goal is to have these move forward as joint scopes of work that one project feeds the information to the other. And at the end, we have a report to say of the three wells that we're trying to test, which ones can we use and then how we can utilize that water. Last fiscal year, we were able to test the right well and the right well is actually the well located on the water treatment plant site. Um, and we actually got good results for both water quality and water quantity. That was a, uh, looks like it might be a two hundred gallon a minute well that we can utilize. And the water quality came in good, but we did find historic values that showed it had a high arsenic issue to deal with. Uh, the other two wells we're looking at are red on this map, the, the, uh, Pee Wee Well off Linda Drive and then the Vermish Well, which was the last well that the town had operational. And some people might recall that, um, the town actually tried to bring that well back online. There's some holes in the casing. So around two thousand and seventeen, they stopped operating that well because it's pushing a, a lot of sand into the, a well line. And then they took it offline and tried to do some rehab work and they never fully got it rehabbed. We want to evaluate that. We may not be able to save that casing, but we like to get some at least water quality and quantity data out of that to see if maybe it's worth a re-drill. It's located in actually a wash area. So we do think it's actually, and that's an eight hundred foot deep well. So it had reasonable production and there was a restriction on, on the Vermish Well as far as how much annual we could pull out of it. I think it was limited to about a hundred acre feet a year. Uh, we don't have that restriction on the payway or the right wells. But you can see on this map, there was a raw water line. It still exists in the town core to bring all those wells back to the water treatment plant. And there's more wells that I'm showing on this map. But we think that just from looking at the condition of the, and the location of them, that these are the, the, the three that we want to focus on. Again, the right well, we've already done the evaluation. We know the water quality. We give that information to Black of each and including the work on the payway and the Vermish Wells. What we don't have right now, and I was hoping to bring it all together, was the construction contract for this. The, the contracts we were going to plan to use, uh, we're looking cooperative purchase agreements for some other cities. And we're finding the original contracts, the base contracts are expiring. So we're either going to try and do some low bids and get some scopes together and/or wait till those other contracts from other municipalities are in place. But we're looking at here is sort of a, a piece to the puzzle. Clear Creek and Black and Beach won't really do much until we get the contractor involved and we can do some work. We have to clean the casings and then, uh, put a test well down and actually test them. But, um, Clear Creek will help us with the yield and the water quality. And, and we're doing a direct select with them, direct select, uh, with Clear Creek is because their knowledge. Council might not recall, but in twenty twenty one, we had Clear Creek do the evaluation of the Desert Hills area in the Aquifer and Desert Hills, which gave us the report that helped us support doing the twenty twenty one water resource policy, which said, you know, we can't drill our way out of the solution of Desert Hills and we had to stop connections out there. They've also helped us do some other work in the town core and, and including evaluating recharge. And then they helped us with the right well. So they have knowledge of the, of the area. So we think that they're a good member to, uh, team member to move forward with. Black and Beach, uh, again, they've helped us with both the master plan and they also in twenty twenty two, they did the water treatment and supply study. And that really looked at the water treatment plant, what it needed. And then with the Pauls and the West Tex, how those can be best be utilized. So this is sort of an add on scope to that. It wasn't contemplating the original agreement, but, um, since these are professional services contracts, uh, with council's approval, we can do a direct select on those, uh, moving forward. And then staff, we would recommend that we keep the same partnership teams moving forward. Uh, we could look and bring other consultants on board, but that'll just, I think, slow, uh, slow the process down for us because we have to bring people back up to speed. So there are two separate actions. The first action is the one with, uh, Clear Creek and Associates for fifty five thousand, seven hundred and ninety six dollars, uh, for their work on the project, to help us test the two of the wells. And then the second action is to work with Black and Beach, uh, for just under thirty nine, thirty thousand dollars to help them evaluate how we can best utilize that water resource moving forward. Can it, can it be treated at the treatment plant between the, either one or if on board or both of the treatment units that we have? You know, what, even bringing these wells back online and using this water as, as a backup or as a main supply to say our Rancho Manana Golf Course has some benefits to the town too. So that's something to consider. But we do have to consider the water, uh, quality and how we can treat it and the cost of that treatment to us in, in, in our part of our evaluations. We're trying to get an all inclusive scope together. So with that, I can answer any questions council may have.
You'd have to, if it's arsenic problem, you'd, you'd pre-treat it before it went into the Paul or the, the other filters, right?
Yeah, there's different things to consider. They actually did have an arsenic program for the well water, um, in the West Tex. They brought it into West Tech vessel number two, and they used acid to help precipitate out the arsenic. So they were running that for a number of years as a pilot program. We found records of that. The one repercussion of that is actually when we went in a couple of years ago, we had some problems with, uh, the filter number two is that acid actually ate the interior coatings pretty badly. So, and we just found that a couple of years ago, but there are multiple ways of running it. And that's why we want to look at and have Black and Beach recommend. Again, we're, we, we have a hybrid plant, so it's good and, good and bad. The raw well water, we have to figure out how we get it into either one of the treatment trains. If, I don't think we can run it to both of them. So we'll have to evaluate how that would work.
As I understand, the allowable arsenic recently was decreased by an order of magnitude. Is that correct?
The arsenic rule, Mayor Council, um, uh, changed in two thousand and one. Uh, it went down to ten parts per billion or, uh, uh, point zero one milligrams per liter. It used to be fifty, I believe, before that. And then in two thousand and one, the EPA changed the rule and they gave, uh, water companies, I think to two thousand and five or six to actually have it in place, arsenic treatment in place. That's why the old water company was actually trying to do something with that well water and treat it prior to our purchasing of the company.
You inherited that problem.
It's the groundwater.
You know, and I would point out that, uh, it's, it's common in the West for water contamination with arsenic. It's a mineralogical or geological issue. It's not an issue of human contamination.
Oh, correct.
Other questions? Okay, there's public comment on this.
No input for either item eight or item nine, Mayor?
Thank you. Then we are ready for, let, let's take, uh, number eight first.
Go ahead.
Good.
Motion to approve a professional services agreement with Clear Creek Associates to assist the town to evaluate two of the town's existing groundwater wells for an amount up to five, uh, fifty five thousand, seven hundred and ninety six dollars.
Second.
Second.
Dusty.
No, I, it, it needs to be done. And sooner we get it done, the better off we all are because that will help us, uh, because we know those water cuts are coming.
It's a good move forward.
Other comments? Okay, we'll have a real. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Uh, I, I just wanted to comment too, that I think it'll be helpful going forward to have the aquifer, uh, details from the hydrologic studies, uh, because that will impact residents, not just for the town of Cave Creek water, but also other exempt wells in the area.
Anyone else?
All right. Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augurton is absent. Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero and we are looking for motion on item number nine then on page seven of your book.
I'll do that one. It's cheaper than Dusty's. Motion to approve a professional service agreement with Black and Beach Corporation to provide a review of the treatment options for the town's existing well water for an amount up to twenty nine thousand nine hundred and forty three dollars.
Second. Sorry.
You had over here a second.
Tom had the, uh, second.
It's important. Why? We know water is really important. We, it's, we are facing a difficult situation. The, the other side of it is as long as we have this water problem, it's going to slow down development. So those that don't want, that want to keep Cave Creek, Cave Creek, you know, you ain't got water. If you ain't got water, you're not going to come in and change us.
It's a good move looking forward for inevitability that we hope never happens.
Roll call please.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augurton is absent. Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We're on number ten, which is council discussion approval of a cooperative purchasing agreement with MGC contractors to replace pump isolation valves at the town's cap two and three booster pump stations for amount up to sixty six thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars.
Here in council, I hope you're not sick of me by now, but, um, obviously the cap booster, um, the pipeline and the booster stations are a very critical link in the town's water supplies, regardless of how we get, uh, future water resources. Um, keeping these sites operational is, is something very important. Um, so this scope of work would allow us to go into the, um, the cap one is actually a cap one booster at the canal is above grade. Uh, so it's actually easier for us to maintain that site and cap two and two, three and four are in below grade vaults. And you're seeing on this slide, a picture of one of these vaults. Um, last year we had an issue at the cap four site and we realized that the isolation valves for the individual pumps are now frozen. So they need to be replaced, but it's a fairly extensive exercise. Each time we go into those sites, we actually have to shut down the cap pipeline. So we were able to do a preliminary scope of work in the spring with MGC. Um, this is the work you're seeing, uh, here. Um, and replace the valves at, uh, one of the pumps at cap two. Um, and we found out how much effort it was going to take. We, we've got an idea of the condition of the, the materials and what's necessary. So we use that scope to develop this larger scope. Uh, we were not able to continue it in the spring. We ran into the summer and obviously now we're seeing our, our flows drop down. So this is the time to get back into it. So every time we go into these sites, it actually requires a full shutdown of the pipeline. So we have to prepare by that, by actually making sure we have water in our reservoirs to run the system for that period of time. Um, so we're looking to replace, uh, um, the other pump two and three, the valves, isolation valves at, uh, cap two, and then all three valves at cap three booster station. We were going to think about adding cap four to this site, but we're still completing the evaluation of whether or not that site can be relocated with, uh, the city of Phoenix interconnect project. Sadly, I don't have all the numbers together right now, but I don't think we're going to be able to do that. So I'll probably be coming back to council with another scope of work to do the isolation valves at cap four. The, the costs of trying to relocate that booster station up to the city of Phoenix interconnect is, is much larger than we thought. Uh, Black and Beach has wrapped up, uh, uh, most of their design work, but we've looked at different alternatives, but it's just, I think it's going to be too costly, but I'll present that back to council. We talked about that being GMP number three to that project. I just don't know if we can afford it with everything that we're facing on the water resource side. So we'll just try to manage the, the cat booster pump stations the best we can and having individual pump isolation valves. Uh, we do have isolation valves at each site, um, an upstream and downstream, but this will do is allow us to individually isolate individual pumps, which if one fails, we can take it out and still run the pipeline. Um, we were not able to do that and that actually caused the issue that we had last summer when, uh, it was actually the cap four site that had, uh, damage, um, to one of the motors. And we actually had for a period of two days, had to work on removing the site and, and taking it on and off, which, which basically drained our reservoirs. Um, so again, we'll probably will add cap four back into it. It's currently not on the scope. It's something we anticipated, but we want to start working with MGC. This will require staff. We'll probably do one set of valves per week over a number of weeks. So we're looking at seven weeks worth of work by this authorization, just because of the, the, or effort to go in and, and, uh, get mobilized and do all this work. So. So again, it's all in the goal of trying to make the cat booster, uh, pipeline and the cat booster stations the most reliable we can. There's additional work and it's something we identified in the capital for the next couple of years that we want to work on. Uh, there's a couple of other things while we're down there, we're going to, there's high pressure relief valves that don't have isolation valves off the header. We're going to, uh, correct that situation and do some other work down there. So uh, this scope is again, um, just tied to the cap two and the cap three sites. We'll probably come back with some work at the cap four. Um, but you know, we're not done on this cap pipeline. We're doing basically maintenance work to, uh, maintain these sites and make them as reliable as we can. Uh, so with that, we're asking for authority to make this expenditure with MGC contractors utilizing a, um, job order contract they have in place. So this is a cooperative purchase agreement. So utilizing, uh, um, a contract that they have in place with another municipality allows us to piggyback on in effect. So.
Questions? Okay, uh, public comment?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
All good.
We're good.
I'm running, I'm running out of time here, you know? Motion to approve a cooperative purchase agreement with MGC contractors to replace pump isolation valves of the town's cap two and three boosters, pump stations for amount up to sixty six thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars.
Second.
I like isolation.
I like water.
Other comments? Uh, my, my only comment is this is one of those, this is a high jeopardy thing. I mean, you have to build it up. Everything's got to go right. They have a limited time to do it. Bolts break, stuff happens. This is the kind of thing that the interconnect project is designed to mitigate. And, uh, I don't think anybody can appreciate how, uh, wrenching it is to have the deadline where the whole town runs out of water if you don't get the job done, which is what this does. So, uh, in addition to that, the, the interconnect ties us into the rest of the world. So we can bring water in to trade it, to get SRP water, to do all sorts of things. So, uh, um, it's just a shame we have to do this before all that is ready to go, but good luck. Okay, we've got a, uh, roll call on this.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augurton is absent. Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We're on to, uh, on to Sean again. Council discussion and approval. I think we let, uh, need to let Ernie make this motion here. It's going to be your last one.
It will be, yeah.
The council discussion approval to purchase a service body truck from Courtesy Chevrolet for the utilities department for an amount up to seventy thousand dollars. And I understand that's a replacement truck, not a new, not a new truck. That could be an important point to include these, uh, presented by the utilities director.
Mayor and Council, yeah. So this is part of our fleet replacement programs. We're not adding to the fleet. What we're going to do is actually change out, uh, a existing pickup truck that we have. And this pickup was actually purchased in two thousand and seven, just after the town took over operations. So this actually used to be the old supervisor truck. People want to remember Dennis Charles. Dennis Charles drove this truck for a number of years. So, um, so for the last few years, it's been, uh, utilized by our, our water treatment plant staff. They have a need to, to, uh, they, they have need for a vehicle. Um, it's, it's at the age, again, it's a two thousand and seven truck. It's the last of the two thousand and seven. Uh, there were several, uh, two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight. So this is the last of the original fleet to get replaced out. Uh, when we looked at what we needed, um, a pickup truck, while very useful, a service body truck, and which I don't have a picture of, which has, she has the, the locking side bodies is something that we more need because we can carry more equipment on it. We can secure it. That's better or something we can utilize. So we have a pickup truck in our, uh, distribution crew right now that we're going to swap in for the treatment plant to use. And that service body will then go to the distribution crew. So they have another tool, uh, that they can better operate the distribution system with. Something again, we've identified in our fleet replacement program that's part of our capital program. Council's already looked at that, um, and authorized this as part of a, a bunch of purses. Purchase. We're using existing state contract. Uh, we reached out to the vendor. They have a truck on the yard. Then what they do is they actually go out and get it upfitted for us. They actually have the bare chassis and then they get the service body put on, but we actually do it through the state contract. So we're looking to get authorization to make that, uh, purchase with Courtesy Chevrolet. So this will be, um, get us into the point where this will be the last of our original fleet from two thousand and seven.
Okay, uh, just for council's information, uh, down in the motion, uh, the wrong number is in there for the amount. It should be seventy thousand dollars, just like that up in the description. So we can get to that point. Please make the motion for seventy thousand dollars. Um, are there any questions for Sean?
I got one. Uh, I noticed it's a, it's a, uh, uh, Silverado Chevy.
Did you do one?
That I read somewhere in there.
I think, yeah, we're buying a Chevrolet. Yes.
Yeah. And I, I hate to bring this up, but did we take a look at Ford at all?
The police staff reached out too. We have, uh, we've been rotating between, uh, a couple of different vendors. So Kershey Chevrolet had, had one on stock that they could reserve for us.
Yeah, I only bring that up because Sanderson Ford has been a huge supporter of, of all kinds of things around the town of Cave Creek rodeo. Uh, different, different events. When we did case at Cave Creek, they were, they supported. I just want to point out to the council that that's been a real friend of the town over the years and, and, uh, we ought to give them a chance as well. But other than that, that, that was my only question.
Okay, other questions? Questions from the public?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, so, uh, we are ready then for a, uh, motion?
The very last one. Motion to approve the purchase of a service body truck from Courtesy Chevrolet for the utilities department for an amount up to seventy thousand dollars. I make that motion even though I drive, or made that, even though I, I like Sanderson, but I drive a Silverado as well.
Cynthia had to say. So you're coming.
It's a needed, it's a needed, uh, two thousand and seven. I mean, I can't imagine having, trying to rely on that. We need, we need to keep the fleet up to date.
That's where I get my trucks.
That's where mine came from.
Other comments? We are ready for a roll call.
Councilmember Augurton absent. We move on to councilmember Bunch?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. You're leaving, Sean? You made her half, half tonight.
Good night, Sean.
Thank you. Uh, department staff reports presentation of the quarterly development services report. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Real quick before Sean, uh, leaves, I just wanted to say, number one, as a, as a peer staff member of Sean Cruz Weisner, it is, um, extremely gratifying to work alongside him. The integrated utility master plan is something that, uh, a lot of other maybe jurisdictions wouldn't come over and ask the planning director, the, the development guys, uh, for their input and feedback and, and get their, uh, ideas and thoughts on where potential growth, uh, centers may occur. Um, so then as a resident, knowing that Sean is on staff and a water customer, um, every day I'm thankful. So just wanted to start with that. Let's go. So, uh, when, uh, town manager Miller started, um, he really wanted to, uh, implement quarterly reports from every department. I, I believe he was shocked when, um, he had asked, when the last time I did a quarterly report was, and I said, there's never been one presented before council before. So, and here we are this evening. So buckle in. All right. So, uh, here's our development services twenty twenty four quarterly report for November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. I'll start with, uh, some projects that are currently underway. Uh, first we have Hidden Rock, uh, the live work phase, which was approved by council in two thousand and fifteen, invested as part of phase two development plan. That was a site plan approved by council that identified live work units along the, uh, front of Cave Creek Road. Um, as you'll see, is kind of a, um, common concept throughout this. Projects get entitled, development occur, begins to occur, different things happen, uh, development slows down, uh, due to the market. Um, one thing that also occurs in these vast time periods is ordinances change. So I, I know back in maybe twenty twenty one, we looked at, uh, some zoning text amendments in chapter two, uh, that eliminated, um, residential uses being placed along Cave Creek Road. Uh, this obviously preempts those changes. Uh, it also requires now a, uh, significant or fifty percent, uh, dedication of commercial space to any mixed use or live work, uh, project. That was another change done in twenty twenty one. Once again, this project, Hidden Rock, um, is different, um, than what the ordinance is now and what, it was approved under the old ordinance. Another thing, um, a change that occurred that is actually positive was when this was originally, uh, platted or it got through preliminary plat for seventy two condominium town homes with no commercial component. The setbacks were zero. So the, um, I know common feedback has been those buildings are right up along the road. That is not the case. Uh, there is actually a fifteen foot setback which was put in place in two thousand and twelve for all commercial projects. So this is actually fifteen feet off of the property line meeting the setback, uh, which allows then a, a pathway to meander through there. And if you've gone by the project recently, uh, they did a, a planter kind of seating, uh, bench. They've, um, done additional landscaping and at staff's request, they've done a, uh, kind of a trellis, uh, vertical trellis along the front and planted that with Lady Banks Rose, which is a native, uh, vining plant that will kind of grow up the side of the building and, and really, uh, break up that massing that so many people are kind of in shock when they, when they drive down and see that. Um, the next project is Focus on the Family. That's in, on the screen, the lower left. Um, that was the former, formerly the Tumbleweed Hotel. And that project is moving along. This development initially, um, in conversation with staff at the time sought to demo the non-conforming buildings. Uh, there were a series of buildings between, if you're, if you visualize between the frontier town, that empty parking lot that hosts various events, those buildings were right on the property line. Their AC units were actually window hung and actually hung out over the property line onto, uh, the Pigler property. Um, so those buildings were removed. Their intent originally was to remodel the other buildings and continue to operate in the same established uses as, as the tumbleweed, which is a short-term lodging facility. Uh, when they got into it and started doing, uh, some fact finding, uh, when they're in the permit planning stages, they found that really none of those buildings could be or were worth salvaging, um, due to various things with the, with the buildings themselves and the cost to retrofit those buildings. Uh, if you do, maybe you haven't noticed, but the general footprint of that property, what's covered under roof is really the same as, as what it was for the tumbleweed. So they took care not to, you know, put a lot of additional coverage or, or do a lot of additional things. Um, the nice thing about that project also is if you look at the, the diagram on this slide, you'll see that, uh, south section. Um, that's all, that was all privately held open space that the town rezoned circa two thousand nine. Um, they purchased that as well and incorporated that into their project and council actually approved, um, additional pathway and parking easements for that property. So we were able to go in and expand our inventory for, um, Black Mountain Trailhead parking by about twenty-two parking spaces along Markway as a result of them dedicating, uh, which you accepted, the, uh, the easements for that. Uh, the last project on this slide is the Tamaris Grove Rental Project, which was originally approved in two thousand and six, then again approved by council in two thousand and twenty. I processed both of those, um, and consists of eight single-family bungalow style rental residences. It is anticipated that this project will be completed in early, in, early in twenty twenty five. Current projects continued. We've got, uh, Galloway Crossing. These are thirty-two apartments. They're originally approved in two thousand and seventeen and again in two thousand and twenty by council. Work was commenced with the salvage and various on and off-site improvements ahead of vertical, uh, anticipated construction that'll begin next year.
Are those rentals or condos?
Yes, those are apartments. Yes.
That's right behind the post office, right?
No, sir. This is, uh, the east end of town. Um, if, if you're looking at, it's the largest one there on the left. It's right next to the stage. Yeah. Windmill Village was the original entitlement in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, next is Desert Hills Brewery located next to Tractor Supply Company. The site plan was approved by council earlier this year in twenty twenty four. Uh, permits have been submitted. Um, if, if, for your reference, once a site plan is, is approved, an applicant has two years to vest that site plan by submitting and having a building permit issued for the project. So this is one that their permits in, it's not issued. If for some reason that, that permit never gets issued or that lapses, then they would be, uh, potentially at risk to have to come back through a site plan process a-again at a later date. So I believe this was approved in February twenty twenty three. So they would have, um, February of, or no, I'm sorry, February of twenty twenty four, they would have until February of twenty twenty six as an example. They've got a two-year shelf life to get a permit issued and actually begin work. The next one on this, the last one, um, is the fire station. Happy to report that a temporary certificate of occupancy was issued by the town last week to allow for occupation of the building. So, uh, firefighters are happy. Got to.
Well, they're, they're in there?
Keep them happy. They, they should be moving out of the double wide inch by inch, right? It's always a utility, right? So here's some, some upcoming projects and I'm just, uh, full disclosure. There, there are some projects that are kind of in talks either we've, uh, we're processing or reviewing a pre-application conference submittal, which is something that's a precursor to a site plan, or we've got a site plan in, or we have something else that's in review and then it's going to come to you relatively soon. So in order to avoid any O M L or, or anything like that, they're, they're not on this, they won't be on this list. So I just want to let you know. The Cave Creek Rodeo Ground Skybox is, you know, we just received a really neat check for that. The, um, foundations for the steel support beams were poured recently and construction is on track to finish well ahead of the Cave Creek Rodeo Days P R C A event in the spring. Um, it's a very great project. The, uh, contractor that was selected is, is doing, uh, great work and following all the town's requirements for inspections and reviews. Um, I also incorporated the, uh, strategic planning element that this fits into. Uh, next is the Mercado, um, northeast corner of Cave Creek Road and Schoolhouse. It's just below the Desert Foothills Library. The project was approved by council in two thousand and seventeen for an approximately fourteen thousand square foot commercial center. The project was vested with the issuance of permits on property to provide additional site parking to the existing development, which was, um, my alma mater, Cave Creek Elementary. Uh, go Jackrabbits.
Look, I'm a little confused.
Yes, ma'am.
It's, it already exists, right?
No, this is, so if you visualize the site, the, the old school campus has been, um, completely overhauled. This is that remaining strip between Schoolhouse Road and that development.
Okay. Is it by the same owner?
Yes. Yeah, same owner and architect that have, uh, been around working on this since two thousand and seventeen. Once again, it's kind of that old adage. Um, sometimes in development, they say, hey, we need to get approved. We need to get our entitlement. We need to get this done, you know, and their, their timeframe is relatively short. But we know sitting back in our office that, yeah, okay, we'll get you through that process and you're probably going to sit around for a few years.
So is it primarily retail again?
Yes, yes, retail. Um, this is something that they're, they're having ongoing discussions with our utilities department about, uh, water service. Uh, there's some existing meters out there and, and some additional demand, uh, which may come back to council in the form of, of some kind of water service agreement for the uses there. Uh, the Buffalo Chip Viola Lane Parking, the town worked with the owners of the Buffalo Chip to improve access and permit additional parking area to support commercial activity in the media, in the immediate area. Staff will be procuring lighting to increase safety of this area soon. Um, this, you know, patience and a positive attitude, this is kind of how those things, uh, tend to work themselves out. The, the owner, um, purchased this land, which was rezoned by council several years ago, uh, for really the express purposes of parking. They're able to acquire the land and, um, incorporate, uh, an exact, you know, parking plan that meets their needs for, uh, what their current occupancies are for the building. Yes, yes, sir.
Um, pedestrian access, the people that park along there, are they able to go behind the cowboy company? Or do they have to go all the way out to Cave Creek Road?
So that is something, um, that I, that I have discussed with Bambi about how to get people from there. Um, and if they, if they aren't necessarily going to the Buffalo Chip, right now, the path of least resistance is to head east to, um, that Hidden Rock Road, or not Hidden Rock. Um, I guess that's Viola that doglegs and goes out to Cave Creek Road. Um, but really our immediate concerns are the lighting of the area because it's extremely dark back there. So once we get some lighting established, uh, we'll be able to.
We don't know how people going out around the cowboy company is a much longer way, especially if you've been imbibing for a while.
Correct. Yes. Now there are a lot of things that, that will need to continue to be addressed and a pathway is one of them.
And that probably is the, you got to address that with property owners. It's not something.
Well, we do have adequate right-of-way there. Um, it's a little pinched at where Cave Creek Road and, and Hidden, and Viola Lane, I keep calling it in round. Are, but that's something, once again, that Bambi's looking at and we've walked it several times and, um, an idea will come to us at one point. I guarantee it.
Right. Tunnel?
Tunnel, there's, that's, everything's on the table or under.
Is, is there enough land for them to access the Buffalo Chip from the west without going around to the front door?
Yes, and that's another option too, that we've discussed with the property owners is, is maybe reorienting or putting more prominence to that west, um, portion of town. It is contiguous. They did a lot line adjustment and combined it within the Buffalo Chip. So there's no, there's no land break or no right-of-way gap between this parking area and the actual Buffalo Chip. It's all one parcel. So they, they could potentially reorient how the main points of ingress and egress by pedestrians are and shift it down to the west.
I really hope they, I hope they do that because there's no parking on the other side.
Right, right.
Mayor, mayor. Uh, Luke, uh, looking at this, I seem to recall when we approved the, the zoning change on that, some, some lady stood there and said that we were going to put a tall, skinny commercial building on this property. We're actually using parking?
I'm not biting, you know?
Now we're going to miss you, Ernie.
Oh, miss you, miss you most of all scarecrow. Okay, um, so that's covers Buffalo Chip. Um, our median enhancement project, um, uh, unfortunately, this is kind of the lull in my presentation. Um, we gave kudos to how many bids we got for the Skybox project, uh, how many, how I was able to obtain for the, uh, tenant improvement for the food bank building. Unfortunately, try as I might, short of camping out in people's driveways, was only able to solicit one, uh, response for this. Uh, our scope of work was very detailed. Uh, our consultants helped us with every facet of the, the scope and the, the request, the solicitation request. Uh, we put it out, the period, uh, came and went with only one response. We went out again and extended, uh, the solicitation and once again, uh, direct, solicited individual independent contractors that were identified on our shortlist of people that are uniquely suited to do this work. And once again, we got one response. Um, so, uh, the silver lining is the, the dollar amount is, um, well within the range that our consultants, um, engineered would be the cost. Uh, so it's not, it wasn't too low that we kind of scratched our head and say, can it really be done for that? And it wasn't exorbitantly high that, um, so that is the, the silver lining, I suppose. But we did give it, um, we did give it all we had to go out and beat the bush and try to get anybody and everybody to, to respond.
Luke, is that a local contractor that bid on it?
Local to the valley.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
Is that going to come before us?
Yes, the, so the contract draft was sent to, um, uh, the company today for their review and we're hoping to get it on. And I'll tell you why this is, why this is critical. Um, per our consultants and, and staff, the time period to hydroseed and really do the first kind of big lift in this project is now. And it's, it's really from Halloween, um, to late January, maybe mid-February, depending on the overnight lows. So that's, um, that's why you'll have a contract back before you very soon so that we can get them in and get them started on the work.
So we have two, uh, landscape companies and at least two that I know of. They didn't, didn't bid on it. Do we know why?
That is a good question. Um.
It's confidential. I don't, don't.
Yeah, the, um, they, you know, everybody thanked us for thinking of them and was, that was about it. Um, so I, I think because this is a very unique project, um, in that it's not putting in new material, putting in new irrigation, uh, cutting back curbing, doing a bunch of those types of things. Maybe people were confused by what exactly what we're doing.
Hydro seeding equipment isn't part of normal landscape.
Right.
Stuff.
Yeah, there's, to your point, um, council member Rhodes, the, the ones in town aren't, they would subcontract out the hydro seeding portion anyway. So. Yeah.
So is it for all the medians?
Yes, it is. Yeah. And then, uh, once again, the town, thanks to the fire station, um, a lot of that native, um, shale cobble that was pulled off of that, the fire station remodel, uh, we've been stored down at the Water Ranch, which will be reused to kind of top dress and tack the hydro seeding as it is put in. So all the recommendations that were presented to you in, I believe, June, um, I, are being followed and our consultants are still kind of involved with, with this process moving forward, which has been a huge help.
Sure that, that, that the ground doesn't have so much herbicide, pre-emergent herbicide that, that the seeds will actually germinate?
Uh, based on since the town last, uh, did extensive pretreatment on it and the fact that we're going to, the contractor is going to go in first and scarify and pull a lot of stuff out and out of the way, then hydroseed and, and kind of backfill and remound and, and do a lot of earthwork in that regard, we're, we're fine. We'll be fine.
So it's coming to us in December?
Uh, we'll see. We shall see. No guarantees, but the, the goal is that they get in and get the work done in January. Yeah. But we're going to shoot, we're going to shoot for second meeting in December.
And one other question, Luke. The medians that are on Carefree Highway, which medians there are Cave Creek's responsibility? How far to the west?
We, we focus it, we focus, we focus this phase, really this project on everything in the town core. So beginning just, I guess, north of New River Road. So nothing in, nothing down on Carefree Highway at this point. We want to see kind of how this goes.
So in, just for my information for the future, what medians on Carefree Highway are Cave Creek's responsibility?
Um.
Fifty, the center of fifty-six street to the center of forty-eight.
The center of fifty-sixth street to the center of forty-eighth street.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, uh, if there's anything else on the median enhancement, so I, you got my apology in advance on record about how many bids we received?
Well, okay.
Uh, the town core plan. Yay, we just, we just did that. So, um, one thing I did want to bring to your attention, the, in the town core plan that was just adopted, I will get council member McGuire's, uh, modification and language and have that in, input as well. Uh, the acknowledgements page of that document will also need to be updated and refreshed. There's been changes since this was originally, uh, recommended for approval by the planning commission. So, um, if that section will be amended. Um, and then this is it, grand finale. Um, staffing and services, I'm very excited to announce our new chief building official, Adam Hicks. Uh, in his career, he's played, uh, or he has helped his previous organization implement considerable processing and procedural updates. Uh, his insight and knowledge for what he's done in other places, uh, make him extremely valuable to where we are moving as an organization. Um, some things that we can already see and have been realized is he's already gotten our ball rolling with implementing paperless plan review and permitting. Um, Adam would have been here tonight, but he's on the executive board for ASBO, which is the Arizona Building Officials Association, which is the professional, uh, building official for the state. Uh, he's, I, I think he, he's on the board of directors. He may be the president, um, but he's actually got a meeting in Prescott Valley tomorrow with that. So I told him not to stick around and go home and get some rest for the drive in the morning. The, the last thing I'll update council on is SmartGov. Uh, we are in the implementation phase with multiple department meetings being conducted to better improve the town's permitting, review and inspection processes. SmartGov will be up and running next year and will give staff the ability to track and report the council adopted performance measures adopted earlier this year. And I just put a sampling of what those performance measures are in the bottom left of this slide. Once again, the, I'll, I'll say that, I think our current software, one of its biggest failures was, came at the implementation process. Uh, literally other departments were handed this new software and said, here you go, go use it. Uh, this has been a really concerted effort on, on all of our stakeholders within the walls over there to get together, discuss our workflows, discuss, discuss our processes and make sure that the software that we're getting and, uh, ultimately going to be responsible to, to work with is going to be suitable for everybody and everyone knows how to use it down to, you know, it's, it's most detailed information. So with that, thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you, Ernie.
Uh, so this is nice to see new development taking place in town, but I have a question regarding buildings that have stalled and somewhat look like eyesores. Uh, for instance, Leland's Jazz Club that's been boarded up for twenty years. Um, can you tell me what the deadline is for buildings like that or any kind of ordinances that address those types of situations?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, so, so Leland's, uh, had a permit issued right, right when I started for an addition and remodel. Um, and it kind of limped on with interior work and demo and they started an expansion and then removed it and, and all sorts of things. And then two thousand and eight occurred, the Great Recession. Um, that building permit lapsed and was later expired. Uh, they left the construction fencing up, as you well know, and it remained there for the better part of the last eighteen years.
You just took it down.
Correct. So, um, I, I will tell you that anytime someone comes in and inquires about opening up a business or, or doing this, that or the other, they need commercial property. That is typically the first place we point from the front counter at town hall and say, uh, contact the Steinmetz family and see if they would entertain a lease or sale of that property to you for your commercial enterprise. Uh, they have not been amenable to that in the past, from what I understand. Uh, even recently, we've sent several people over and they've contacted them and had it back and forth. There was at least dialogue that, from my understanding. Um, but what we were able to do in removing the fence, which I think the, the construction fencing and ultimately becomes an eyesore and more of a hazard than, than not. We, we discovered that there are, uh, transient living in that building. Uh, so we contacted the owner and said, look, the construction fence no longer cuts it. You're going to need to board up everything. Uh, here's the methods by which you do that to secure the, the perimeter and control egress to that site. Um, and they did, uh, within a week of us telling them, we're going to have to cite you or condemn it per our building code. So the, unfortunately, those are the, the apples that people see and not necessarily the apples that people buy. So that's kind of the, the rundown on that. But there are, there are procedures put in place that you, you want to work in good faith with people that are trying to build something. I, I use the, the story of the guy that had a, a building permit for his dream house issued in nineteen ninety-two is up off of Arroyo. Um, it was Adobe. He built it brick by brick by himself on nights and weekends. And I finalized that building in two thousand and eight. So the permit was from nineteen ninety-two. That's a long time to have an app, active open building permit, but those types of things do happen. Um.
It's just unfortunate because that's right as you drive into our town. It's just unfortunate because that's right as you drive into our town, the Leland's building. Um, another question for you. How about your planning staff? Um, is it fully staffed?
The, we are getting into, um, our budget cycle, and it's something that we need to, uh, discuss and address. There are, there are some things that we need to look at from a staffing level or from a process level, find, determine what the root cause of some things that are going on are. And we'll be bringing recommendations to the council ultimately, uh, whether that's a, another full-time employee or a part-time employee or any combination. Um, but I, I can just tell you that on a plan review side, staff would be, just in general, would probably be better served having another plan reviewer, for example, like, uh, an engineering plan reviewer that can do kind of the smaller scale engineering reviews on prod, on different, you know, a barn or a mare motel or, or something like that. Um, so those are some things that we're looking at. But I, I, I do appreciate you bringing it up.
That's good. Thank you.
Other questions? Well, that concludes our business tonight. Meeting adjourned.
Did I do it?
Ernie, there you go.
I forgot what it is after all these years. It's the very last thing we're supposed to do. It is a motion, mo- motion to adjourn.
Oh, you make it.
He just did.
Second.
Falls in favor?
Uh.
Let's give Ernie a hand.